On the system and I'll figure out a way to pull the videos together. Ready to record me?
Okay, is there a lot now?
Yeah.
Do the lie in the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, the integrity and justice.
Before we get started, I would like, I don't know if there's anybody from the Turk's office that's on Zoom. But I would like to say one thing and kind of congratulate them. Uh, you know, we had the election yesterday. It was a national election. It's big, you know? And I'd like to just uh congratulate, thank them for their hard work and the volunteers that helped them. Uh, it's a big job and could be stressful, but uh it ensures we have a uh a fair and honest democratic process here in Laurel County. So thank you to be to you guys down at the, your crew down at the clerk's office and so. With that, we'll move on to uh public comments. And um I don't I'll just read, I'll just tell you the rules of the public comment. And then I'll call for anybody in the room that has them and then on Zoom. Uh, so you have three minutes to address the commission on on county business. Uh, we ask that you stick to county business and not get personal and and uh be civil. And uh so, oh, and state your name uh and where you're, what what area you're from when you, when this first started on itself. Somebody in the room would like to comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Vansquik, live on Buttermilk Canyon Road. Comment about the uh send email earlier in this, in October about the situation on Buttermilk County Road with the log trucks. At that time, the road was getting pretty bad. And so we were suggesting they shut clear up the log trucks. Since that time, the loggers did repair the road. It's actually pretty good safe right now. So I would suggest that you authorize Eric to shut the road down anytime log trucks start damaging it. In two thousand eighteen nineteen, they were logging. Nobody said, nobody stopped them. They kept going to the road. Basically, the road on Lone Rock side became impassable. On this side, barely passable. I'd go up every day, dip water out of the road and I called Gillon County twice that year for uh rock and some bad holes and they did did fill them in. They'd billed me for one load of rock, which I didn't pay. And you know, not me at that time they shut down, but no, you know, they just kept going to the roads and possible, impassable. So someone needs to monitor that situation. And I think as long as they maintain current condition, be fine, but given past history, I think Eric should be able to shut it down and I'll, if it starts getting bad, I'll let Eric know. So okay, appreciate your time and death.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it. Uh, is there anybody else in the room that has a comment? Is there anybody on Zoom that has a comment? Raise your hand, please.
Not seeing anybody raising their hands.
With that, we'll close public comments. We'll uh open an agenda. So if you can, you can just hold on ahead to the agenda.
No.
Instead of agenda, is there anything the commissioners would like to your civil house and discuss, okay?
I don't have anything, you know. Well, uh, we did have a hand raised. I don't know. Uh, Matt McCaw, you don't know if they just came in a little bit late or whatnot. Would you be interested in hearing public comment?
Sure. Oh, yeah, Zoom.
Yeah. Matt, you're uh unmuted.
Okay, great. Sorry, sorry about that. I was trying to look through the agenda. My name's Matt McCaw. I'm the executive director for the Greater Idaho Movement. So I was trying to look through their, your agenda to see if, if that was a specific agenda item later on. If so, I'll just, you know, lower my hand and turn off my video and address the commission then uh to, or I can talk.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Okay, great. Then I will talk to you later.
Okay, thank you.
So for a quick vote consent agenda.
Second.
We'll move to the second, to the second consensus and there is further discussion. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, then we'll move on to our first of the business item five today. Amendment of American Rescue Plan, A R P A, state. This is gonna be public, but it's.
Yes, I'll, I'll be.
So uh, this is uh, the last um commissioner's work session. Um, I did a presentation on a recommendation to um recommit the ARPA funds that the county has remaining. Um, reasons for that, I wanted to be uh just reiterate um, the two remaining committed uses that we have are uh grants, one to uh City of Hepburn, one to um the daycare. And uh after reviewing the details and requirements of those with the auditors, uh, those are going to be considered um um sub recipients instead of beneficiaries. And the distinction between the two is um a significant amount of uh compliance uh requirements for the sub ultimate sub recipient. Um, as their federal funds, um, for example, um, by receiving the eight hundred thousand dollar grant um for the daycare center, uh, that would subject them to the a heightened level of federal compliance for use of federal funds. So um, that reason, um, along with uh to ensure that we have uh all of the ARPA funds committed prior to the December thirty first deadline, uh, because after that, we can't modify commitments. Um, but you have until twenty twenty six to expend the funds. But hypothetically, if there's a project that changes or is delayed or whatnot, um, after December thirty first, we don't have the ability to recommit those funds. And if they're not used, they ultimately go back. So given you know, both the the administrative burden and the limited ability, uh, I wanted to uh make a recommendation that um is contained in this agenda item and and resolution. I also included the presentation uh that I went through during the work session on this topic. Um, so essentially what this will do is remove the commitments from the uh uh, the existing commitments of ARPA funds and then commit general funds uh in 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 its place. Um, and then commit the ARPA funds back to um uh an expenditure that we know is going to, you know, with the high degree of certainty that's going to occur. And in this case, it's the the ambulance service providers, um, and those agreements. Um, that will ensure that we expend all the funds by the deadline and reduce any burdensome compliance requirements on finding to grant recipients for these funds. Uh, so I have uh drafted a revol- a resolution. And then um part of the uh and I've provided all the details in that resolution as well. And then there'll be a um uh if the board approves this, then included in the supplemental budget that was posted and put into today's agenda would be the necessary budget budget modifications to accommodate this.
Then uh is there any other questions? You're having, you have a public hearings. Can cover that, right?
No, public hearing is supplemental budget. Um, the hearing is not required to do the commitment of funds.
So do you, do you have any questions, Kevin?
Well, I think it's a good move. Off the recipients. Also make sure that money is bested.
I'm glad you've got that sticking out. So.
To approve resolution R twenty twenty four, twenty four to modify the commitments of the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery fund as stated.
And then move to second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next, we will have our uh uh fiscal year twenty twenty five uh some projects. And and uh open that with a public hearing on that and so I'll go ahead and open the hearing and I will start with the Stafford with Kevin.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, we're in public hearing now.
And apologize, my, my computer just completely crashed. Okay, so um, there's a couple of items that are being covered in uh this supplemental budget. Uh, first would be the recommitment of the ARPA, um, that's the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, state and local fiscal recovery funds. Uh, that's the acronym that's in the agenda item of R F S L F R F. Um, and there in the detail of supplemental budget, um, I broke it down so that you could see the the reason and and the driver behind each one. So uh, that'd be the first one. That's uh in the resolution there. Um, the second, uh, if you recall, the uh prior uh commission meeting, um uh standing players from Public Works uh brought forward an item uh to do some advanced spending for cultural resource survey at the airport and and there was a discussion and that that was ultimately approved by the board. Um, and there was discussion um about the funding since the um um airport funded budget for that expenditure, which is probably fifty thousand dollars. Um, subsequent to that, uh, we discovered that there's existing uh remaining funds under um the grant, it's an organ business. Yeah, Oregon Business Development Grant, um, that we hadn't expended all of, and they've authorized the use of those funds, so it'd be reimbursement. Uh, so in this case, um, it's an increase of appropriations and resources since we'll get reimbursement uh back. And this, that's the necessary budget adjustment to co- to accommodate the cultural resource survey. Uh, next on the supplemental budget, the Forest Service Fund. Uh, this is for the search and rescue vehicle project uh for the sheriff's office. Uh, the board had authorized the the use of the Forest Service Funds uh for that project. It was anticipated to be completed uh originally prior to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four. It did not uh get completed uh due to some uh just some timing issues and unforeseen delays. And so uh those funds weren't expended in FY twenty four um and carried forward into the beginning balance of fiscal twenty five. And this budget supplemental budget uh uh increases resources for the additional fund balance that we have in that fund and uh makes appropriations so that we can uh finalize that project and extend those funds in fiscal twenty five.
So on that given, I mean, I assume that we are, but we're still in within the bounds of using the federal funds, even though it crossed over the years.
Yep. And that's my report.
Okay, any other questions still? Okay, with that, I'll open it here of public comment. Uh, is there anybody in the room or online that would like to uh comment in favor uh of this resolution of the supplemental budget resolution? Or or do is there anybody opposed? You're online, raise your hand. Do you want to speak? I don't see anybody, you see anybody with the, okay. With that, we'll close the uh public testimony and uh the commission will
I'll move to a third resolution R dash two zero two four dash two five, adopting supplemental budget for FY twenty twenty five and adjusting appropriations as detailed there. Setting.
The note is not good. All, all any of further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carrying.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is uh excuse, this is your twenty twenty five budget resolution. Adjusted up some transfer calculation.
Uh, yep. I just noticed that the camera doesn't pick me up right here. Do you want me to move more over to the speakers table?
Yeah, cameras will pick him up.
Yeah.
We thought it might, I guess it just.
Yeah, focus is right on boundary. Alright, so um, these are budget adjustments that are um able to be made through a board resolution, don't require a full supplemental budget and public hearing. Um, the first item uh is related to the Assessment and Tax Office. They had a capital project in fiscal twenty four for a mobile assessor program. Um, and again, there was a vendor performance issue, and so we couldn't uh or the uh Mike Gorman, the county assessor, couldn't uh sign off on that project prior to the end of fiscal twenty four. Um, and so that expenditure carried into fiscal twenty five. Um, and so this adjustment uh transfers the rem required amount from general operating contingency and general fund to the Assessment and Tax Department of the General Fund. And then the second one is the uh parole probation or community, community corrections fund. Uh, there is a uh pass through of grant funds from the Justice Reinvestment Program grant uh that that funds that department. And uh this creates the appropriations that are necessary uh to pass through those grant funds to uh fund uh Mount Emily, which is a requirement under that grant program. And again, these two um anytime that we make a budget adjustment to a pass through payment, uh, which is considered a special payment, that can be done via resolution. Um, and then the one for the Assessment and Tax Department and the General Fund uh is well below the uh threshold uh and can be the ten percent threshold and uh can be done by resolution as well.
So we, do we need to do these separately or can we do them as together as?
I would say you can't do it together.
You're doing the motion then?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty four dash twenty six and twenty twenty four dash twenty seven to adjust the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget and make the transfers appropriation as described there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carry.
Agreed.
Okay. My side, you have is uh people of the H C P D's of five three model and five three one one. Ensign's beautiful. Patrick.
Good morning.
So before you guys have put our grant applications as they stand currently for both our fifty three ten, fifty three eleven grants, these are formula grants provided based on um payroll and some other pieces that come down to us through ODOT. Um, there are fist fixed sum. Um, I was able to go through those numbers with Angie from ODOT and put these together. Um, the first one being the fifty three ten, let me make sure I have the right one here. Uh, that one, we have set aside. It, it is the lesser of the two sums for a hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty four dollars. Both of these do come with a uh match value put on there. Um looking through this here. We made the choice with this lesser sum to set it aside to right size our vehicles. We currently have several vehicles that are not ADA compliant. We're utilizing our other ADA compliant vehicles to um transport one ADA accessible person at a time. To right size these vehicles will allow us to utilize this newer vehicle to take up to two. One of the routes that we run regularly is our um dialysis run, sorry. And that does require two wheelchairs from time to time. It's been a struggle for us to be able to either find two drivers to take those at the same time in individual vans. Or we have to use one of our full size buses to do that. This will allow us to put a vehicle on the road that can facilitate more passengers. Um, the utilization of these funds to do that is a pretty clean and efficient way to utilize those funds to the maximum ability um and not have to carry over that through the duration of that two year fiscal cycle. And that's why we chose to use that sum to do that. On the other one, the fifty three eleven is the higher sum of uh four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty two uh dollars. We, looking at our sums, we totaled that up, looking at what's available for those. We were able to fund most of our administrative funds through that, which includes the manager's salary, dispatching salary, and some of the other pieces um that fit in under that administration administrative umbrella, which is, is a requirement um pretty specific how we can spend those funds. And that number was reached based on the previous year's expenditures that would fit within that boundary. And then the remaining sum, we rolled over into our preventative maintenance fund, which is our other more fixed and predictable sum by utilizing the higher sum for our administrative fees. It has a lower match value, which allows us to more optimally spend those dollars and save money in our general maintenance or our, excuse me, our general fund, which is our uh anyway, the, the other fund that we have that we can utilize and carry over. These funds, if not spent, will not carry over. And so by spending more, more optimally, using that ten point two seven, I believe it is, match. Instead of the fifty percent, if we were to use this for operating, we can carry over more funds in our other grant.
The STF operating.
Yes, thank you. Our operations, not general. That's correct. We did have some questions that Kevin brought up regarding some of the ODOT questions on these pages as to whether the questions were speaking to us as an agency or as the county as a whole. And I'm still waiting to speak to on Friday. Uh, Angie is coming back to go over some of those with us to get some clarity, but those will not affect the sums. Just the um risk assessment type questions.
You guys got any questions about?
So you show that there's a match on the fifty three eleven and you show that the matches um we able to use the preventive maintenance as a match?
No, so and I don't recall, I know that the administrative was ten point two seven, I believe. For that, the match portion will come out of our STF fund for those.
So it's still state or federal dollar change for the project?
Yes.
I'm going to put rooms. This is again considering his very interest and is there, so they can be seen themselves up in twenty to me, so on the floor, then me.
I'll second.
Uh, so this uh agenda item provided all the details uh in the, in the body of the agenda item, but essentially um Oregon statute requires the uh county accountant, if appointed, or my office anyways, to uh uh review and audit any distributions that are made prior to them being made. I provided the ORS references in there. Um, Tammy, our finance manager, she uh identified a situation uh where we had, we had an authorized accounts payable packet that was a, a whole batch that was ready to go for payment um and was subsequently modified after it was approved and um before it was, the checks were cut. So there was essentially about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars of payments that went out um uh of the county that didn't uh get reviewed and audited prior to um uh the distribution. Um, and that review and audit is to obviously ensure that it's, you know, they're, they're legal and and valid expenditures for the county. Uh, subsequently, um, and because it's a, it's a control internal control deficiency or or breakdown in internal controls. Um, and it, we went outside of uh what's required by statute that wanted to inform the board. Um, and but I also wanted to provide what we've done uh detail on what we've done to mitigate this from, from occurring again. So when we, when it was discovered, um, we uh immediately uh got together as a group and the, the finance team and the treasurer and we reviewed, you know, the current process as it existed and uh I worked with our software vendor to see what we could do to um uh restrict the ability to make any modifications after something's approved and took us a, a few days to get that all in place, but uh we have hard system controls now that won't allow somebody to modify um any payments. Uh, once, uh, once a batch or a distribution has been approved before the checks are cut. Uh, if it is modified, then it has to go back and be re-reviewed and approved. And those are hard system controls that uh can't um, you know, the, the only person that could bypass that would be me, but that's as the administrator of the system, that's unnecessary evil. So um, again, I don't have any recommended action. Um, it was a, there was an internal control problem that we identified and wanted to report it to the board. Um, and uh we have reviewed subsequently all the payments that were made. Um uh, and they were all valid and and there was no issues concerning any of the payments, but uh wanted to bring this to the board's attention uh and answer any questions if you have any.
So maybe you can walk us through how that actually happened, I guess. I'm still confused as to how, how does that?
Yeah, so we didn't um the, the system security in a, in a E, uh ERP system or financial system is, is pretty complex, is a big matrix and uh uh where you assign roles and uh you typically would go through an exercise where you validate that there's complete segregation of duties. Um, I'm guessing so when, when in code was implemented number of years ago, um, that system security was never fully built out with, and that's, and that's not uncommon when there's uh maybe only one or two staff and segregation of duties is impossible. Um, and we're no longer really in that situation. So those hard controls weren't in place. So what we're, and those are what we would refer to as a preventive control, right? It prevents the, the uh issue in the first place from ever happening. Um, what we do have in place are detective controls where we review things, review transactions after the fact, where um, it may not prevent um uh an inappropriate transaction or or something like this, but we have control process in place to, to detect it. And that's called a detective control. So we were relying on the detective controls. Um, and that process, uh, essentially the person that was inputting all of the invoices into uh into the system um would input all that, it'd print out the, the, the register, uh, which is a, a, a list of basically all of e- details of all the invoices that are entered. And then that would go to our finance manager and myself for review and approval. Um, following that, then the same uh person who input that information would go back into the system and approve it themselves, update it and sends it to uh the treasurer for um processing of the payments. And so we didn't have any, any hard stops in that, in that process that required somebody else to um, uh, be involved in the, uh, be involved. Um and when I say hard stops, like anything that actually prevented payments being cut uh in the system. Um we've never had an issue with that. Um, luckily the detective controls that we had in place identified it. Um, and uh, but since we, it it came up as a problem, we we work with the software provider to to get the system controls in place. It makes the the process of of making making payments, you know, adds a couple of steps to that, but. Uh, I think that's a necessary thing to en- ensure that we can't bypass uh what's required.
So we're now proactive instead of react.
Yep. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I got a question about the entire system on. And it was, it's probably in the agreement, but I don't remember it, uh, once it's installed. We have a, do we have an ongoing contract with the provider? Yeah, if we run into issues that, you know, where, like you just described, kind of, maybe it might block us from doing something. Cause it wasn't built out, you know, it's not really a software glitch, it's just because the system is complex. Do we have like a yearly, when they, they come on? This is all in the cloud, so they're gonna be able to look at it all anyway.
Well, so this is our current system, um, and it's actually on-premise, uh, and so it's. So it's that, this one's not on the cloud, but yes, we have, uh, we pay for annual support. And where if we have any issues, we can get on, uh, you know, get on the phone with supporter. Uh, through email or through chat, and there's a number of ways that we can communicate with them, and they uh provide s- support with us. And and in this issue, in the, this wasn't a system problem, this was a setup and configuration.
Yeah, I figured.
Yeah, when we, when we do implement a new system, we'll fully build out all the system security, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And our next item is um. We got to consider. Rejection plan, right? That's the one really went awfully, right?
That's a different, that's a different.
Yep.
Good. This. That's good.
So this is um. We had the invoice submitted, um. Our micro purchase or small purchase threshold is uh five thousand dollars above that. Uh, any contracts purchases that aren't exempted in procurement policy and ordinance. Um, requires us to obtain three quotes, um, they can be very, for that amount, they can be very informal, they can be. You know, screenshot from a, you know, three different vendors on website or. Write written notes from three different phone calls, just that we attempted to uh to uh. Uh, engage in a, in a competitive uh bid process. Um, when this contract uh came up, uh Matt and I had discussed it, and. We didn't, and we didn't think that we would end up over that threshold. Um, and we did, and it's only by a small amount, but uh again, as as we've discussed, um. That's, you know, our procurement policy is is an ordinance and, and uh so if we don't follow that, I can't. Technically authorize payment of the invoices, the the work's been done, and it is a legitimate claim, though.
Any other questions for you, just out of curiosity? When we uh. Approve payment of unauthorized. At any, at any time. Do those, does that approval, does it become? Uh, attached to whether it's a grant? Review or audit or whatever like that, where does, how does that?
So.
Or you just keep it in your records, it seems to flag.
Yeah, so what we would do is I'd take an excerpt um from the minutes, uh, and we attach it to the. Uh, documentation that goes with the check that we keep in our uh accounts payable files. And uh that way, if, um, so the auditors, so for uh something of this amount. Uh, they wouldn't specifically look for it, but they will do random testing and pull random invoices. And they'll verify that we followed any applicable laws, whether they're county or state and or federal. Um, and we'll attach uh the board minutes to that, so they can see, hey, you know what, we didn't uh. You know, in this case, we didn't follow our procurement uh ordinance, uh, but. It was, you know, brought to the board of commissioners as required by the uh ORS two ten one seventy. Um, and so. And we followed that part of it and deferred it to the decision to the board of commissioners for authorization of payment. So, yeah, it does get retained in the records, the only time that I would imagine that would come up is is if the auditors pull it. Um, and any known, I guess, any material known violations or issues, I would bring to the auditor's attention. Uh, more proactively, uh, uh, five, fifty, a hundred dollar invoices and. In our general fund, it's not, it's not a material amount, it's like, would be typically something I would bring forward.
So there is, so in the, in the contract, it shows his hourly rate um for all of the different things. There are way to put it about to exceed, so it doesn't happen again.
So one of the things that we're looking at with this, this was a um. An issue to cover a um janitorial services while we had a medical leave. And so uh this was something that was not really anticipated in in previous. Uh, there were uh outreach to a couple of different janitorial services, we did get two. One was a complete county set up, the other one was partial, it was done a little bit last minute because the availability for scheduling of the medical treatment. And um, so we didn't get the, those are the three, in the future, we'll have language on that. One of the things that we're looking at to do, um, uh, trend of this year is to get some open-handed. Uh, kind of service agreements to get uh price quotes for like electricians and. And and that janitorial would be one of those, so if we do need to do, uh, have them come in. We have a contract in place where it's all set and we can just, uh, you know, issue a, an order and we could put language saying. Not to exceed five thousand, actually, we wouldn't even have to worry about that because we went through an RFP process.
Yeah.
And it's all.
Other questions? Okay, so you're looking for a motion to um.
Well, make the motion to authorize payment. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Next up, the so the E, you know, transit manager, working on a class of things, uh.
Morning.
Morning, Vincent.
How's it been you've been doing?
Good.
It's good.
Okay, um, so for our working on a class policy, um, employees who are. Asked to uh perform a department head's, most of the department head's job, um, in the absence of the department head. Um, can be considered for some temporary assignment pay. Um, right now that we're asking you to consider this for the transit manager position. Our transit manager resigned effective um October eighteenth. And so our transit supervisor, uh, Pat Keely has been assuming both roles um. In the time being, uh, while the position is posted and can be vetted and um filled. And so, um. For the policy, the uh working out of class incumbent can uh receive an increase to their base rate of pay. Um, at the greater of either the base rate of the higher level position or five percent above their regular pay. Whichever is greater, um. So we are asking, um, and I can let you talk a little bit about um. Pat's qualifications, but we are asking um to assign Pat Keely um in a, as an interim role for working out a class for the transit managers. Um, and to have it effective. Uh. October twenty-first, that would be the first business day after the um previous transit manager resigned.
Retroactive.
Yeah. Do you want to add anything, Vincent?
So, um, after the previous uh manager had resigned, um, I asked Patrick if he'd be willing to assume the responsibilities. Of uh the manager and he ecstatically said yes, at least it seemed like he was ecstatic about it. He's done a, an excellent job, um, assuming the position, and so, um, he's gotten his. Jumped in with both feet, has um been in conversations with uh ODOT. Oregon Department of Transportation regarding grants, um, completed the fifty-three ten, fifty-three eleven grants that he uh came. And uh gave, gave that information to you earlier, and is also, um. In uh talks with ODOT and with other grants that we have coming up that are due. And so, uh, the STIF grant, um, which is, I believe, due in January, and then there's some other grants as well. Um, including um FTA regulations regarding. Uh, a grant where we're looking at at building a new facility for for the um trend services. But um, in my opinion, Patrick is more than able to cover the position, he's um very knowledgeable and he is. Um, doing quite well with everything that's, that's happening and that's going on, so.
And also, I'd just like to add, uh, the reason why we're acting, we're asking for this retroactively instead of proactively. Is because we did not uh receive the notice of resignation until after the deadline of the last BOC. It was, we put it on the next available date.
Any, any questions or remarks on the subject?
No, I think if he's doing the job, then he can just.
No.
Thank him for stepping up and doing that.
Yes. Enthusiastic. Okay.
He, he does it with a smile, which is great.
So, uh, we have a motion, okay.
I'll move to this next, Patrick Keely, working off class due to the recent resignation of the transit manager. Becomes a step one of grade twenty-five for the duration of the enormous name and effective ten twenty-one twenty-two.
I'll second.
Moving to second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I'm gonna stay if I think.
Sure, thanks, I was just asking a, a point, um. We brought this up to the board, BOC, because the policy specifically states uh to do so, I was wondering if that's uh. So good with that, this is one of those ones where it kind of uh. May fall under the county administrative role just for an interim and then relay that information to you. Uh, but it just, just as a point of consideration. If we would like to modify that policy in the future, if you like, it would be okay to be able to do these retroactively, we can continue with the policy access. I kind of like the transparency through the BOC.
Very nice.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up, and we'll continue in that way then, thank you. Okay.
Well, let's see here, oh. Lindsay, the next item, it's a compensation board appointment.
Okay, so, yeah, I would, um, like you to consider an appointment for the compensation board for, um. Effective January one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have a vacancy, uh, one, it was actually. Open last year too, we just um operated one member short, which is fine, it's um allowable under the aura. Um, but the term was served for four years. And we received one application, that was uh Maria Richards. Um, I don't personally know her, but um, she seems like she has some uh good qualifications, she. Spent thirty-one years um at Lamb Weston in the finance department and retired as an accountant there. Uh, she also was a business owner, um, and then she served on uh the Boardman Chamber of Com- Commerce for five years. Uh, I do need to make a correction in my background, I said that she serves as the Boardman Chamber of Commerce, but I believe it was past tense. Um, so she stated that she would like to serve on the board to um help serve her community. So just asking for consideration on appointing her.
You know, they're involved in the community and they have a good, better background in the.
Yeah, one of our other board members actually, um, um, pushed her, recommended her uh to the appointment, so.
I'll make a motion to appoint Maria Richards to the compensation board for a four-year term, second.
I'll move to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up would be seven G.
Yep, and Daisy and Steve. So this will be the third time it's in front of you. Um, after the last board hearing, um, there were edits that were um noted. So I needed to wash my hands of it, gave Daisy the task of reading it cover to cover, she did that. Um, we had to reroute it back through Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA. Um, given that the changes were not substantive, they have held that our original August sixth date is the valid date and all the cities have. Um, twelve months from that time to adopt and implement, I think Daisy did a really excellent job. I was reading it last night and panicked a little bit, cause there is a. Um, maybe didn't transfer over my notes to Daisy, but there's a. Reference on page fifty-four, there's a footnote relative to data centers that should be um stricken. It wasn't necessary, it was raised in the past. Um. That's the background information, the real, the genesis of this is, um. A state and federal mandate to have a current hazard mitigation plan adopted. And updated every five years, I wish we had funding to do that, or comprehensive plan, but we don't, but we do with this, so. We use these funds to contract with the state experts, the hazard mitigation team at Department of Life Conservation and Development. Um, I think they did a good job, they also noted the. Three different staff people that we went through, we're on our second emergency manager, and I, I think. Got it handed back when um Paul Gray left, so, um. There's a readoption resolution in front of you, which I propose that you adopt with striking language on page fifty-four. Do you want to add?
Uh, just that the figure nine can also be stricken, it's, I think, irrelevant, given the changes that we made to the paragraph above it.
And the reference, the footnote twenty-two, okay, yeah. So that's all.
Well, that's.
So, the footnote I was reading through, page twelve, table one, it doesn't match the narrative down below. Talking about the total acreage that they can be. For some reason, there's an erroneous eleven thousand extra acres.
What, what is more or what is less?
Yeah, it's just dirt from there, if you don't manage.
Oh, so the narrative says one million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two acres of land, and the table shows one million, three hundred and ten thousand, is that the point?
Yeah.
Okay. How would you propose to handle that?
To reflect where the actual number is.
Okay.
I don't, to be honest, I don't know how many acres really can leave it.
Yeah, we can double-check our comp plan too. And census data. Okay.
But we. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So on page forty-four, as you say, you're striking the figure nine for a reference this morning.
So on page forty-four, you say you're striking figure one, the references, Marla County has on data centers.
That was what I just said yesterday.
And then the couple of other, when it says, hands on data centers, I would propose striking Amazon, just list data centers. I'm not sure whether. Pulling out, because we have more data centers than just hands on.
Okay.
The old reclaim facility is a data center currently.
What is?
The old reclaim entire facility is a data center.
I don't see the, anyway, you said the point. I don't see the reason for putting a brand name, business name. It'd be like, maybe. Anyway.
And then page fifty-four. We're talking about critical facilities and infrastructure profile, medical facilities in the chart, table twenty-seven. It doesn't list anything for boardman, but there's homey river community health services. So I was just wondering why we aren't referencing Homey River Community Health.
Just an oversight.
Page seven?
Page fifty-four. So is that in the narrative?
In my table?
Table, table twenty-seven.
So it shows zero medical facilities?
In boardman.
Yeah.
There's a cancer. Because us women have.
Well, you know, at the time that the report was put together, the. Marla County Health District may not have had to. So, you know, I understand.
It's been about a two and a half year process.
Okay, so how do you want to handle this?
Let this see the changes may come back.
You want to reschedule them or do you want to adopt with the changes so noted?
Well, I think that before we. Adopted, wanted, tried to adopt with the changes so noted, but yet like the reference to hyperlink to the Oregon article came back in it, so I'm not comfortable with it.
So should we have a work session chair so that we. Go through it line by line, so we don't have to continue to do this? Or do you, because are there other things that we might catch? I know with Daisy leaving, I don't have a lot of capacity to edit a whole. You know, five hundred pages document.
It seems all this subjective for a. For a. Technical, if it is called a document. I mean, it just seems that way. I know you guys didn't write it. But they had a professional writer. It just seems. You know? I don't know. To me, so, I don't, that's, that's just my impression when I read it as well. You know, they're drawing conclusive, not really, that they're getting close to drawing conclusions or. You know, it just seems subjective to me. So I don't know, did. What do you guys want? You want a work session or you want to just? Have to make the changes and bring it back?
Make the changes and.
Alright.
What's our deadline?
Um, well. The clock's already ticking, so the document in front of you has been adopted by OEM and FEMA, so we'll have to route it through that process again. Do you, Commissioner Winholtz, want to read it through again, just if you find other errors that we've made? But it, it would be a pretty daunting task to change the whole context. And that's the trend of these documents. It's not like the original generation of hazard mitigation plans. I don't disagree at all, Chair Sykes. They seemed more. Objective, but through the federal government, the state and local government have been. Tasked to be more inclusive, perhaps is the right term than we were in the past, so. A lot more sensitivity and deference to vulnerable communities. That sort of thing.
Yeah, there's a lot of that going on with everything, Steve. I, I get it now, since you say that, but so.
So your question was, I mean, I guess I'll be very frank and honest here, you know, I don't feel that it's our job as support commissioners to be the proofreader here. I think that staff should put together. A document by the time it gets to us that shouldn't have these weight nerves in it.
Okay.
Being very frank and honest.
Yeah.
Because I don't think that it's our job to be the proofreader. But I do expect.
We don't have a professional proofreader on staff for documents and tasks.
Or reviewing the document, you should be able to do it, you know. I didn't go through and read it every five hundred and five pages, word by word, browse through and these were the things that I.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Too, having said that, right, so our list was FEMA state to make sure that we're meeting their language requirements moving forward. Because this is imperative for our ability to take funding from the state in the case of emergency, the document has to be done. I can appreciate the changes because I agree narratives and tables should be ready up, right? That's at least, other than going through line item by line item after the professionals have delivered the product. I mean, we could keep kicking the can down the road. And I agree with a hundred percent document. Having said that, I think it puts us in a precarious position in the county. We continue to kick the can and had a major.
It just seems that the can we need is for approving that document that's out there.
Put our signatures on it.
I understand both sides.
Yeah, we're not, we're the ones that are taking responsibility for what's in there. We approve what's in there, so.
Sheriff, I can propose, if it would be helpful, you know, with Daisy shifting out, possibly have. Steve and I just assign ourselves to be editors, work together on it, do a final swap to help. Planning on this and with particularly with the transition and have that back to you on the first meeting in December. Is there okay, Steve?
Uh, whatever you need, man. Absolutely.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that or just a?
No, I think you've already made clear it was not going to be a motion. There was a motion to approve it, it'd be one thing, but it's okay to come back when it's been described, it was a threat back on the business side. I don't think any action would be, or excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That'll be all on that, right? So, Terrence, on the hazard?
Yes, thank you.
Next, that's with the, our, who, Daisy, from, four, just one for, second meeting. That's easy.
Yep. So. We have the second reading, which, so the board had adopted. A series of changes on October second. And so that was unanimously adopted with the following changes that. The data centers used to be subject to administrative review rather than conditional use permit as was recommended by the planning commission. And then adding the provisions submitted by AWS with regard to allowing a traffic mitigation agreement. And so those two changes. Were made in the version that you see in front of you. And then after the adoption of that first reading of the ordinance, there were further recommendations that were presented to staff. I summarized them in my memo. In your packet. And at a high level, they included more clearly identifying uses that. Don't require zoning permit, so farming practice in the EFU zone, harvesting of forest practices. Forest products in EFU forest use zones. And then other things that don't include construction of permanent structures or addition of significant additional vehicle trips, which. To be clear, we don't require zoning permit for those uses, but in this version, which wanted to, we were. Suggested that we could make it really clear, just add a separate category of uses that don't require any permit. So we did that in the EFU and forest use zones. The second one was to clarify what, when a DEQ permit is required for long, large onsite septic systems, which is one of the triggers for administrative review. So we just added a note in there, design capacity greater than twenty-five hundred gallons per day. There were some minor reference revisions where, just because we're reorganizing the code, some of the. References were set D five, now it's like F five. Those got moved around a bit, so just those minor amendments. And then I made a note that there was another recommendation that Jeff had presented that was to require. To switch from currently how we have it is that structures larger than a hundred square feet require a zoning permit. It requires building permit until they're two hundred square feet, so to just make that consistent. And the note that I made there is that we. I feel that that's a pretty substantive change, and so since it hadn't been discussed in prior public hearings, we would recommend that that change be referred back to the planning commission for a work session. As a part of a future round of code updates. Other than that, I also made a note that there are a few. Different sections that were not included in this amendment package that were just, felt like. That we wanted to kind of narrow in on the scope of this amendment process, so there's some confusion about that. None of the, none of our zones are being deleted. It's just that those were not included in your package because they're not being changed. Yeah.
Questions?
Yeah. Would you like a reference to the section and think she wrote in the section?
Sure.
Section three oh one oh, page one. And when you're talking about farm use, does that mean that customary accessory uses and structures, for example, corals and pins? We define what corals and pins are because, I guess, my thing, he wants to think since you're spence.
Sure, I mean, if it's just fencing, unless it's over six feet tall, there's no zoning permit required. We could add that in there. This is language I just copied from the Umpala County Code, since I felt that was most in line with. Recommendation other than reinventing the wheel, but.
So, you know, and maybe again, this is just me, but. You know. Then if I were to read this, if I were a farmer. And it says a corraler pin, I now need a zoning permit to go put up a corraler pin?
Again, if they're only over six feet tall, technically legally, you need a building.
Should we have something that identifies that then?
And these are only examples, or we could just delete corals and pins. We actually talked about those specific, sure, that's easy to do.
So just keep it as for the purposes of the section, farm use does not include customary accessory uses and structures, which may be permitted, subject to provocation permit.
Just remove the corals and pins.
Because farm sheds, I mean, it's all that it is. So next one would be page three fifty of three oh one oh. And I'm looking at number two, segregation reservoirs, canals, delivery lines. Associated with a district. So I guess my question here, does this mean that West Extension needs to do administrative review, put in a new line?
Which page, sorry?
Page three of fifty.
When they put in a new line?
So as an example, Boardman is converting all of their canals to underground pressure system. So that would be a delivery. And, you know, under this section, they could have to be. Go through administrative reviews, the way I.
Yeah, that's, that language is direct from ORS. And I. And I know it's based on a controversy down in central Oregon. I don't know what to do with it. I mean, we're not even aware of delivery lines when they're put in, so. I'm not sure about striking that without going back to the ORS.
So currently, that's would be yes, would they? Or changing from. A canal to a. Planning to get a ministry to.
Technically, yes. But I don't know how the ORS defines delivery lines or if we even define delivery lines in our code.
Yes, moving on to the next, page five of fifty, number nineteen. The only one that confuses me yours is metal senses. It says in existing dwellings. Residential home is defined existing dwelling is objective. So what does in existing dwellings mean?
Uh, there's residential home definition.
At face value, it. In an EFU zone, you could not build a residential facility. From the start, but you can convert an existing dwelling to a residential home.
And that's a, it's a residential care facility, not a residential home. It's like.
Yeah, yeah.
One five, page one. In the end, we're subject to zoning permit approval. We still list farm use propagation, purpose, you know, forest property, so we're still going to require zoning permit. Resource related.
It's in the resource related industrialism.
What?
Three oh one five, page one.
Section three oh one five, okay.
The R is I zone isn't. It's not used a whole lot. Zoning that.
So, so I'm not sure what the question was. Is it B?
So, yeah, so. You're gonna farm or forest in a resource zone, you're gonna have to get a zoning permit?
No. It's similar to the same provisions as the farm and forest use zones. We didn't touch every zone that in the code. There's other zones where. Like, I understand your concern about the plain reading, but. The. Re relocating each item as far as like adding the extra provision for uses permitted without a zoning permit. We, I did that in the farm and forest use zones because that's where it comes up. The R I zone just doesn't really use that much. So that's one of those things that.
It wasn't changed. It's what has been in the code.
But it didn't require zoning before it was designated.
It's in black, number one.
Yeah, where it says subject to zoning permit approval. Would you go through that with the farm and forest?
I see the point, okay. We could strike the amendments in this one in section B.
Okay.
Would that suffice if we struck the red line amendment in section?
Then on page two of the same section three oh one five. Number four. And it's the. The horse and stand starts with tan gases defined by ORS, not otherwise permitted under subsection one B of this section. And it says, can you point me to where sub-section one B is and what it says? I can.
Forza.
Subsection one B.
Here, or. Not otherwise, we get under subsection one B. I think that's the numbering piece. It'd have to be here. Look, we strike the not otherwise permitted under some section one B of this section. I don't know what the one B is. Oh, it's, it's the numbering piece, not otherwise. It should be B two, I think. Under some section B two, big capital B. It's a use permitted outright.
Just, I went looking for one B and I think.
Okay.
So we went on to subsection three oh two oh, four, two zone, big one, I guess. Here, I will probably strike corals and pins under farm use. Like we did on the ETS zone. Ready for that one? Section three oh six zone.
That's a general question.
I guess this is my first. Fresh or pharmacy or liquor or wired. This is a higher level of approval from what it used to be. And so then I looked at, you know, other things that are allowed. So retail trade establishment, food and groceries, general, that's still all of them. You're familiar with the difference in impacts. Was they require a higher level of review?
Yeah, that's a policy call. If you, if you think it requires a different level of review, you can just.
I mean, obviously, I said something in mind as to why it required higher levels. Be interesting what you.
The.
Mind of thinking was.
Yeah, I mean, just that a lot of property owners um are less comfortable with a liquor store as a adjacent or adjoining use rather than a grocery store, for example. That was my uh mentality for changing it, but if you have a different um policy recommendation, we can.
Grocery stores still.
Sure.
And it had most likely a higher traffic impact, so I would say that we leave it in there.
You wanna leave drugstore pharmacy liquor store as a permitted outright use?
So man, moving on to rural residential three oh four oh, page one. And it's fun, so it's left here, still.
So if it's a residential use, like a garden. A garden's permitted, is permitted as a portion of a residential use. Farm use as defined in the ORS would include those more intensive uses like building a barn. Um, those sorts of um.
Someone owns five acres, they have up horses, and they'll build a barn. I own nine acres rural residential. I'm gonna grow melons on it. Now I have to get a zoning permit?
If, if it's a farm use, yeah, building a barn would require zoning permit.
Because it's a structure, but I wanna grow melons on nine acres that I own. I'm gonna have to come get a zoning permit?
No.
But that's what it says.
That would be just a component of a residential use to grow whatever you want in your backyard as far as, as far as our processes are concerned. It wouldn't be considered a farm use as. In terms of like. The way that it's defined in the ORS.
A-actually, I think we could um if we change the word farming to farm buildings.
Okay.
So that would be not just the telling of the land, but it would just be farm buildings that would be subject.
Right, or the commercial operation of farming, like, practice, it's.
Yeah, but if I'm growing nine acres of melon, that's not for my personal consumption.
I think it's really just the building.
But it's the, uh, one of the things in the ORS, the farm use is primary use. So let's. On this?
Yeah.
And again, I'm trying to make it not have no problem. I'm using this example. I have ninety percent a separate tax law. It's always on EFU. So it would be the primary use of. And if I have this one, it's, there's probably somebody else.
And we also, in addition, have restrictions on animal density.
Do we allow farmers in our, in the grower's entrance as a, as the only us? We didn't have any.
Yeah. That's kind of a rural thing, still. Learning the rural stuff, but anything else?
So I guess where we add on farming and requiring zoning permit.
Only for structures.
But they're also subject to animal density.
So, um, section three oh six oh, sure, commercial, page two of five. In section B. Why are we referencing general? Three oh six oh is the general commercial zone.
And where did we, uh, did we duplicate it? In, under V, you said?
Yeah, first line.
GC, okay. In the GC zone, okay. That's really a scriven there.
So session three oh seven oh, page one. It's back to the farming that needed.
In the industrial zone?
Yeah, um, I would say that um for farm structures.
So maybe this similar language that you use in the IFU and forest use zone then?
Um, you know, we were going through the ordinances, um. Back in the early two thousands, the county adopted an amendment to the general industrial zone. So that farming became an outright use, and I don't remember the example, but there was a reason for it. Uh, we could mirror the language in the EPU zone. So we would use the farm use as defined in ORS is allowed outright without a zoning permit. Review, except dwellings and other buildings customarily provided in conjunction with farm use. For the purpose of this section. Farm use does not cus- does not include customer accessory uses and structures. Um, let's see. I, I think we should um probably make a little bit of a change to that, so it doesn't exactly mean that EFU language is very restrictive. And I think the intent and the previous ordinance twenty seven years ago was that. Farming is allowed in the industrial zone, but in this regard, because we made these other pieces subject to five point oh. One oh, I think it's farming is allowed outright, farming structures are subject to a permit.
I understand structures meaning that's on.
Farm structures. Subject to. Farm structures are subject to section five point oh. Yeah.
We move into the space age industrial three oh seven two. Number four. Excavations with landowner tenant. For operations reasonably necessary, construction, reconstruction, maintenance, access routes, same parcel, adjacent parcel. So you've been to put a road in out on your property, it's gonna get a zoning permit? I mean, for your own internal use, you have to get a zoning permit.
So if it's a private access road, and this doesn't really say which one. Of access roads. Or on an adjacent property.
And it's reasonably necessary for farming.
Um, yeah, I mean, they definitely would need some sort of um right of way permit if they're connecting to a public right of way.
Right, you need an access permit off any county road. But a zoning permit to. Run over a greater rest of property so you can access a field.
I don't know what the cross-reference is to ordinance O R one twenty dash thirteen, or what that history is. But I see your point. Uh, that was related to the mining, because um number three was related to the mining. I think we could probably just strike. Because we don't require.
I mean, it's allowed, but you know, off above it, all these things down below are subject to.
Subject to a permit. I don't know, what's your, what's your thinking on that?
And I think it's similar to like farm use as a, like you can get really specific, can really enumerate every single use that's allowed outright versus what would require a zoning permit. But it's always just been stuff, kind of discretion, like if when someone comes in and asks for a zoning permit, like. We would never have required a zoning permit for farming. We would never, like, we would make that call based on the specific circumstance, so. I think the more specific we get, the longer it's gonna be, which is fine if you think. That's important, but I think at the end of the day, it really depends on the situation, and I think there are some sort of situations where. We wouldn't require zoning permits, some situations where we would. Um, so we can make that more specific and more kind of nuanced and really drill down on what the triggers are for zoning permit approval, um. But um I don't know what exactly that language would look like, just off the top of my head.
Is, you know, just making everything subject to zoning permit, I think, well, just seems like we're adding another layer of bureaucracy, you know, some more government. Control of what you're doing on your property. And, you know. The use of your land is if it's allowed outright. Just I'm having a hard time understanding.
The intent, the intent, sorry, the intent of the changes was, isn't to. Increase the bureaucracy or require more permits than we were requiring before. It was just to clarify the process and. In doing so, I understand there's a few places where you had said the plain, plain reading might lead someone to say, oh, this would. Potentially require a zoning permit, but in practice and based on statute and case law, those are things that we wouldn't. Require zoning permit for, and so the more nuanced and specific that language is. That's fine, if that's your preference, we just, it's kind of hard to sort of come up with that language. When we, like, a lot of this is copied from, or not copied, but like. Um, taken, I guess, inspiration from other rural codes, and we've done our best to um. You know, just put it in there, but for us to sort of reinvent the wheel on getting really specific on those definitions, um, I don't know. If, if you have a, like, recommendation for how we would word that, that's, that's fine, I think, but a lot of this is just similar to what other rural counties do and. Um, it's, again, it's not really changing what we do and don't require a zoning permit for. It's just for the intent of sort of clarifying our process.
If I'm a landowner in this, so not read this, that it literally says, zoning permit is required to put a road across my property. I mean, that's literally what it says.
Yeah, I, I think we could, if it's okay with you, we could strike number four, and on number one. We could um adopt language similar to what we have in the EFU section, so. If we struck number four and a number one would be farm use. As defined is allowed outright without a zoning permit, except dwellings and other structures. So the idea again is that we capture the permit for structure, which to Daisy's point is our practice.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I get destruction. Land use, if it's allowed outright, to me, that seems like I don't have to come get permission from somebody to do it if it's allowed outright. Give it a zoning permit, it's basically getting permission to do something.
It's a semantics that I don't prefer either, but it's, it's the common terminology in Oregon. Outright doesn't mean. You're free to go without any sort of review, and that's was what we had hoped to reflect in these changes.
So moving on. Ordinance article four, page three of one, linky key.
Which changes it?
So the second paragraph under A is a repeat of the top one.
The top ones are local roads and.
And the second one is for arterial and collector roads.
Does that make sense then?
So, article five, page seven. So you're there. Page. And then, you know, you got H I J, it looks like it's all part of the same paragraph. But the last sentence there for county approval shall be stamped by register of the professional engineer. It repeats two more times.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that.
That's a scriven there, we can correct that, so.
Okay, article six. Page fifteen.
Page fifteen?
Yep, page thirteen. Article six, sections associate one. So the second sentence, the county may generate, may grant, Mr. Leave applicable criteria for the decision not changed. That number three provisions, the county applicable to the original approval of not changing. Is that kind of redundant?
I think that was an AWS request, just to make it abundantly clear, but it is clear in the first paragraph.
We can do it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, article seven, page six. So we get down to C medical hardship, and I see it for changing from special use permit to variance. So, but then we reference permit and permit fees. So, we weren't calling it a permit anymore.
It's been, uh, it's just been inconsistent. We've inconsistently called it different things, so I'm trying to make it more consistent. They're calling it a medical hardship variance because it requires planning commission review, uh, and is more consistent with the variance procedures than with. Um, the special use permit procedures. It's still a permit, it's a variance permit, but.
Okay, so maybe to. Uh, make it a little more clear, and maybe it's only to me, but maybe a medical hardship variance for required a permit or something like that. And then we can still reference permit down there, but they're going to the variance and then still calling it a permit all the way through.
A variance is a permit, so you could say a variance permit. It's truncated, um, when she just uses the term permit. But for readability, that makes sense.
So, you know, it goes all the way through that section, goes on the page seven.
So would you propose using variance or variance permit?
I mean, it's not a variance permit, really, that's not like.
Or variance may require a bit.
It's a variance application, uh, you'd have to get approval for a variance application.
Which is a land use, a land use permit.
Yeah.
So article seven, page ten. And A. Yeah, it's the where applicable criteria for decision not changed, number three, basically repeats to something. So then, and when I was reading the findings of fact to support. And and. So this is on the first page of the findings of fact. References can be for. So since we're in there, dating the. Zoning warrants. Be the plan to replace all references. I mean, since we got.
So we're, we're quoting a stuff, like a standard, which is article eight point. O four O, that that language is being changed with this update, but it hasn't changed yet, so we're just quoting what exists in this.
That makes sense, but. So the new eight O four O will say board commissioners.
Yeah, that's in the language that you reviewed, eight O four O.
Okay, thank you. So that's it.
Okay. How would you like to proceed? Do you want it to come back? We can do that.
Make sure that changes.
So we'll come back, uh, first week of December. Uh, yeah, we can use this, oh, yeah, we'll have to call it number twenty five, oh, no, it'll be twenty four. I can see that in the future, Mr. Chair and Mr. Jensen, we should probably have a work session in between planning commission recommendations and board actions. When we have legislative action, this was. A a really huge undertaking that took a huge amount of Daisy's time and I won't have Daisy after a couple of weeks, so. My capacity to do something like this.
I have a suggestion, could you get it to us a little earlier than you did this time? I mean, that is a big challenge. You know, when I first looked at it, I figured how many days you could.
I think Daisy emailed it a week ahead.
A couple of weeks, I think.
This time, yeah.
Yeah. How much advance time? And I think that's worth noting too, if you have, um. Things that need to be changed, it's, I think, a bit more efficient to email those changes ahead of this. Meeting, so we can sort of bring you that draft with that recommended, those recommended changes rather than kind of going through line by line.
That's been my customary when we have a legislative action in front of the board, if it's that detailed. You work directly with staff, so we can come back with a. A document that's ready to adopt, or we can have a work session. We won't have capacity to do much code amendment moving forward for at least a while. So maybe it's a non-issue.
Well, some of the changes, you know, I brought it today, I brought up when the four of us. Those changes weren't reflected. I, I would have anything of this substantive. Size that we do sit down and work session, just hash it through the network things, then we can have a clean one as it comes through. Because there are things, you know, my mission's gonna bet do that, but you're a different set of eyes and you're legislative body, so it's.
I mean, if you're trying to do it with fewer meetings too, I would like a work question, that way you could have more than one permission of.
Yeah.
Present, you know.
Yeah.
Rather than a committee, we only get one permission. So that would be.
I don't think so, any other comments on the, on the highlighted changes since the last uh, screening? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Idaho state border, you still there with us, Matt?
I am.
We're all about zoning in uh, Morrow County lately.
Yeah, it's very informative, um, so, so commissioners, I, I would like to just give you an update on where we're at and then. Be able to answer questions for you guys as well as uh, anybody that's in attendance there, if that's all right with you. Um, I'll take just a couple of minutes to kind of set the table.
Matt, before you start, what we usually do is I'd like to ask our counsel to give just a brief. Explanation of why we're, why you're here, why we're on the. Uh, agenda and how this all originally.
Yeah, I tried, I forgot.
So the public already know, always knows what we're doing.
Uh, the citizens of Morrow County had an auction, sort of ballot, forgotten. About a year or two ago, um, asking, almost putting a requirement that the board commissioners meet. A certain amount of time every year, not a certain date, but a certain number of times. To discuss the relocation of the state border in between Oregon and Idaho, and that's the idea, discussion. This has kind of been a push, I think, in the past of a lot of other counties have passed this to try to get that conversation going. It doesn't direct saying. You have to be on certain dates, you have to take certain actions, but allows that set opportunity as a business item more or less to have that discussed. Many times, there may not be any updates, but this allows the opportunity and currently, uh, the board has utilized that to not just. You know, have the conversation between the board commissioners, but also to allow comment to. From Mr. McLeod, I think representatives of the group, um. Changing the borders have always attended, so I know they appreciate that, they have been constantly here, have made every appointment, so that's the background, it's a requirement. And and our ordinance is here laws that meet, there are actually penalties, fines that we imposed, it's not, so. At this point, it's just passed by the public and why the board commissioners are have to hear it.
And uh, so, and we've always invited somebody from the group, it's on their agenda, so Matt, could you. Uh, introduce yourself and say. What your position is or about your relation to this, to the group is.
Sure thing, my name's Matt McCollum, the executive director of the Greater Idaho Movement, uh, I live in Powell Butte, which is in Crook County. Um, lifelong Oregonian and and got involved with this movement about four years ago. Uh, after the last election, presidential election cycle, um, so just to give all of you an update on what's happening with Greater Idaho. So so council with uh, did a nice explanation of why we're having this meeting here in Morrow County. Over the last four years, we've gone to thirteen different Eastern Oregon counties as a movement and put on the ballot in front of voters. Uh, various questions, but but essentially, you know, they all kind of get to the same thing is, do you want your elected leaders to. Discuss, look into the possibility of joining the state of Idaho and and we've won in all thirteen of those counties, so. So over the last four years, thirteen Eastern Oregon county voters have voted for some form of looking into moving the border. Um, and and so. That's voters have spoken and said, yes, we want elected leaders to do this. And and so just so everybody knows, the process for moving a state border, any two states can move their border as long as the two state legislatures. Agree to move the border to a new location, um, to that end. The state of Idaho in two thousand twenty-three, we had a memorial that was introduced into the state of Idaho legislature that was passed by Idaho House. That was invited the Oregon legislature to begin talks, um, we had a memorial also in the Oregon legislature. That did the exact thing, same thing in reverse to invite the Idaho legislature to begin talks. It did not go anywhere in the Oregon legislature, but what we learned in two thousand twenty-three was that the people of Idaho and and the people that represent the people of Idaho. Uh, are very interested in this idea and they are ready to move this forward. Uh, Governor Brad Little just came out about three weeks ago and said he supports border talks. So there's a lot of momentum amongst the people of Eastern Oregon to see this move forward, and there's a lot of. Interest from the people of Idaho to see this move forward, so. That all being said, we did not have any votes, any, we only have two more counties to go to votes in Eastern Oregon, so we didn't have any votes in this li- last election that just happened yesterday. Um, that that directly uh, added counties to this movement, but we do have the legislative sessions coming up in two thousand twenty-five sessions. In Idaho and Oregon, and we will be right back in those two state legislatures with memorials, um. Trying to get the Oregon legislature to move on this, so again, the Idaho legislature has has shown a lot of willingness and openness to have this conversation. The governor has has publicly stated that he's on board, um. Where we're, you know, our, our struggle is in the Oregon legislature getting movement for our memorial there. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, that's where we're headed, uh, that's what the movement is doing, I will say, even though yesterday we didn't have any. Um, counties voting to to add to our total, there were three different counties in Eastern Oregon that had various. Um, votes about repealing these various sorts of meetings that we're having right here. Um, and in all three of those, and in our movement didn't oppose those measures, we understand that, you know, for some of these counties, we've been meeting for four years. Three times a year, and you know, we've kind of. They've kind of run their course and gotten as much out of them as we can get, so we didn't even oppose those measures, but in all three of those cases. The voters in those counties, Malkier Lake and Baker County said, no, we want to continue these meetings. And and what that tells us is that the people of Eastern Oregon want this pursued. They want this long-term solution to move forward and they want their elected leaders to do more to make that happen. Um, so how does that play into Morrow County? Well, we've had eight of those counties that have already voted. Commissioners, boards of commissioners have written letters to the state legislature on behalf of the voters in their counties, asking them to move forward. That is an option that that the Morrow County Board of Commissioners could do to help move this forward, to help encourage Representative Smith and. Uh, Senator, uh, you guys are gonna have a new senator, he just won yesterday, and and it's escaping my, my mind. Uh, no, Nash, Senator Nash, um, so. You can, you know, write a letter asking that they take up the issue, that they support this legislation, that they ask for hearings. Um, as eight other counties in the state of Oregon have already done, and then also there is, uh, you know. The the counties of Eastern Oregon are all part of the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. Uh, the vast majority of those counties, the voters in those counties have have voted to ask their elected leaders to move this forward. We've asked the Eastern Oregon Counties Association to also put out a letter of support or a letter requesting legislature take action. Um, that is something that that you as a board could support and do to sh- to show that. Um, you're supporting and hearing voters and moving this forward, so that's kind of where we're at, I I would love to answer any questions for commissioners or people. Um, and and just be a resource here.
Okay, thank you for that, is there any questions anybody has about? Okay, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay. Next step is uh, performance review, retirement fund administration, and that's me. Um, it's been a, let's see, I have to put this on the agenda, it's been a year since we've had. We chose the administration, administration of our, of our retirement fund. And I'd like to ask the commission. If they would, uh. If they were, or what they thought of having a, uh, review of their performance. And I, and I don't mean the. The return on investment, you know, look at all the, I'm just talking about how it's, how it's itself could administer that. The mechanics of it and their, uh. Customer, I guess, you want a public interface, so is, you guys have any thoughts along that line? And uh.
So looking at their customer service, um, responsiveness or. How will it progress?
When their husband's. I mean. I know that because I've, I've got a bunch of them. I don't know if you guys have or not, from complaints from retirees about what the.
In the beginning, I think there was more than I've heard lately, but that's just.
Yeah, okay, so we, there's that, and then. Then I hear later from other people, and I've heard they've been to my office, they've phoned me, they've done the emails. And they've caught me on the street, so they hit me about just about every way you can. And uh, it's, it's two-part to me, it's the mechanics of administrator. And then when they're told to to contact them. The, they're responding, all their, their response to their, to their issues and their problems, I've heard. Those, you know, those two, those two different things, and that's the two things, if, if the board of commissioners wants to. I'm gonna turn this over to Matt. Uh, to finish that, but if what you thought of maybe doing questionnaire, that's what I thought. Is to find out, so it's not just anecdotal or hearsay, you know, what's going on, is maybe document. What, what, and then make a decision what we're gonna do at that point, you know. If, if anything, you know, just break it down into, you know, how does, you know, you've done those surveys where they go, you know, rate one to five, you know. What do you think of our service or was, would people helpful, did they answer your question, blah, 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 blah.
So you're having a friend of participants?
Yes, each other retirees.
Yes.
Get the list of retirees, you need to do an email. I mean, you, I've done, you know, I've set up myself, I've set up surveys on my website. Or my business where they go in and, you know, ask me questions. And then email it to all the.
So you're asking for, for us to go to Nationwide and ask Nationwide to give.
No, 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 we, we, we would, we would do this ourselves, we would come up with a. Or have a, have a, have a consultant, I don't think, I think we could do it ourselves, but maybe you have a company do it for you. And uh, you know. Give the list to retirees and uh. Either a mail-in deal or they mail it back or email or something like that. That's, and and only if you, if you want, if you think it's a good idea, but I don't know, Matt, before we decide.
Yeah, one of the things that we have, and Lindsay's uh, come back in for this discussion, uh. And she's pretty intimately aware of it, also Kevin's been working on it. As you, as you're well aware, uh, the transition to Nationwide is, is the holder of the funds and, and the N B S, uh. Uh, benefits being the administrator did not go. Anything close to what you can define this, uh, we had mispayments at the first of the, uh, the calendar year. Uh, we had to scramble and do some adjustments and, uh. And uh, the county had to front money, those are things that were reported to the B O C. We also had uh, some, some re- recent retirees that retired right. Right before the transition that we continued to have to do payments uh, through March. Um, and then we've had just continual issues with N B S as the administrator of that. Um, in July first, uh, there was supposed to be a cost of living adjustment for all retirees. That was not processed, it was, it ended up taking a month to take care of that. Uh, we've had other uh, uh, delayed benefit starts for other retirees since that time. Uh, took almost three months to re- redo that. Part, and then we've had some other items, uh, that were mentioned to the, to the commission, we had. Uh, untimely tax payments, uh, from the plan, uh, to the state to, to file that for our. Uh, retirees and untimely actuary payments, and then recently, we've just been struggling for about a month. On a, a benefit payment where when a retiree turns sixty-five, they get an additional amount and. Uh, that was submitted, requested by, by our staff and it's, uh, still hasn't been processed. And then just, just lack of timely response. Not only from N B S, from the retirees when they call in, but from. Us as staff in contact, when we contact them saying what's going on. It's, you know, delayed if not just silence. When. We, when we originally went through this, this issue. One of the things I brought up to Kevin and Lindsay was we just need to change. And at that point, we're like, well, let's see if it'll smooth out. It really hasn't smoothed out. And there, the continued lack of communication, lack of responsiveness, delays in taking actions. I, and the resulting complaints and issues from retirees. A couple of them were significantly loud, but you know, it's their money. They work here. They, that's, that's their benefit. Which shouldn't, you know, be tangled up. I was ready to come and ask that before Chair Sykes put this on there to just ask and let. Well, more or less ask permission for us to start pursuing, to give N B S a. Notification that we were not happy and that we're looking at other options and pursuing some, some other options with that. This is kind of a different, that would be a different process than just an RFP, partly because. We're a defined benefit. There's a lot of different groups that like to manage defined contributions because it's easy. It's stock market. Everything's, it's, it's fairly straightforward. The defined benefits and the size of our account is not something people are clamoring to. Jump on, sir. I don't know if that's what N B S's issues is. Personally, I dealt with them under another municipality and they seemed to work great then. But in this instance, it just seems like they've turned a deaf ear and it's just on autopilot and there's no one answering the radio. And unfortunately, we were running into issues on that. And so. While I would be open to, you know, sampling from the retirees. We do run into a few challenges that we do have legacy people, then we don't have emails for them, even when we are trying to contact with them with. With the payments of the first of the, the calendar year. We didn't have phone numbers from all, and we were tracking those down just because some of them have been retired so long, we didn't have that. And so we would have to look into seeing what we could do with that to effectively send that out to them. To do a survey, but we're just to the point, I'd like to give notice. N B S to, to address for a little bit, but then have, have staff start to look at, at other providers and other options. If, if possible. What kind of contract do we have?
So we have two different contracts. The out clauses, we can give thirty-day notice.
No, said no cost to the county or to the.
You know, it's, it's kind of like, well, there's, we've got the two contracts. We've got Nationwide for holding the funds. And Kevin, chime in if you're correct if I speak wrong. And then we have N B S for administering it. They're supposed to be the ones sending out, you know, statements, everything, coordinating those kind of things, change notifications and such. And Nationwide brought in N B S as their, as their face for that. Our original. Consideration was with Nationwide. And so while we have two separate contracts, it's kind of part and parcel of the thing.
Like selling a mortgage.
Yes, understood.
Yeah, and so. So in doing this, we've got to look at kind of both of them and see, or, you know. I, I don't know because we've had several meetings for them and one of the latest things, we requested. Assistance from some of the regional managers for Nationwide and I never heard anything back from them. That's frustrating. And it's, it's to the point where I think we just start. Proceeding to look to see what, what's a different option that can have better communication and better responsiveness rather than. Unfortunately, putting together a survey, which I think I know what the results will be. They aren't happy. It's not communicative. It's not easy and. It's, it's a frustrating effort for the retirees.
I, I, I suggest a survey because I didn't know how extensive. Your knowledge was. I had reached out to some of the staff and asked them, have you gotten complaints? Have you documented them? I didn't know if this is just me, you know, because people know me. So I didn't realize how extensive. So I'm, what you're saying now. I, I don't think it's necessary to have a certain, that's true. And you're getting, you're getting to where. I would want to go anyway.
Yeah.
Based on just, but didn't want to be just by Daryl's perspective.
This, this has seemed to be systemic. Unfortunately, we, we wanted to see if it was just, you know, okay, an odd transition, a little bit rough. But in my mind, it, it's not improving. While, while the complaints are dying down a little bit, it, you know, it's, there's no consistency in their responsiveness and their communications. And we're still, I mean, we had to step up with, with required IRS reporting and. Kevin had to take a big bat, get things taken care of and to avoid fines. Those are things that should not be done with an administrator or retirement plan.
Well, absolutely no reason we should be fretting on an insurance company that has.
Yes, the issue here is the size of our portfolio. Sixty, seventy?
Let's say a hundred.
Okay, then.
Retirees or total participants?
Retirees.
Retirees. And some of them haven't worked for the county for twenty years. So, you know, they. And so it's, it's difficult to get some of the information. This is very reliable. And so we, we really need to take some steps. And I just haven't seen. It's moving out and I haven't seen any, any response by Nationwide or, or N B S that, that assuages my, my concerns.
I'd like to say something about our size, you know, I don't know. But to me, when you deal with companies, good companies set up processes to do something, you know. And they set up processes to take care of things. They set up a process to address complaints. And it doesn't matter, you know, how big you are. That process should take care of whether you're, you know, like somebody said, well, we're just small potatoes. I mean, well, it shouldn't matter how big our potatoes are. Because the company process, whether you're big or small, if they're a decent company, should accommodate, you know. And, you know, and it, it's saying, well, we're just small, well. Then, then they, they don't value your business, you know. And why would they have a, see, to me, a good company doesn't have a separate system. For small and another one's super efficient for large. I mean, that, you know, I just don't think that's what, why, why I made it operate.
I, I would agree with you.
So, I don't know how many companies are out there that are equivalent to Nationwide, but.
It's, that's a, that's a tough one. As, as Matt said, that a lot of the. Plan administrator or organizations that offer administration services focus on. Defined contribution plans, which are much simpler to, to administer. There are some options that we've, you know, found through networking and, and conferences that we can reach out to. To explore. Good news, you know, this falls under, you know, an exemption from any procurement. So we have any. We have the latitude to identify the best solution. You know, outside of that, the only other option would be to. Bring back administration in-house, but we've proven that we don't have the resources available to, to, to do that. And do it correctly and, and maintain compliance with all of the requirements and laws surrounding the administration of a, a retirement plan. And that predates, you know. Lindsay and I, it's just, it's kind of lived along and, you know, we, we need to do it right. So. There's. It's not gonna be a straightforward process. I think, you know, as Matt said, we need to identify some vendors. I think that. The right approach is to still use third-party administration, but we need to find the right person to do that, the right entity to do that.
It's a small thing on a, on my recent conference. I did reach out to some of the vendors that were out there. Most of them were defined contributions, but I did get a few. A few leads for contacts up here in the Northwest area. Of course, there, we, it doesn't have to be geographical. We can reach out. Anywhere and everywhere, but it'd be nice for the administrative people to be firmly aware of what, what the requirements are here.
You know, I bet you, you know, and you guys have, both you, Kevin and Matt, you, you have contacts in organizations, municipal organizations. All still different sizes, some smaller, some larger, you know, and I go, you know, you think, if you sat down and made a list of all the organizations. You know, that, okay, cut out the ones, the big potato ones and just most of us, it seems to me there's a hundred. Where are they getting their work done?
So we're unique in that. The county goes in its best interest to self-administer a single employer plan. The majority of other entities, public entities of the state of Oregon are on hers. Or a multi-employer full plan, which typically have administration resources along with. So I'm not saying that we're the only one. I haven't tried to figure out who's self-administering an in-house plan, but. That we're, we're a little unique in that.
Not explaining, because that was still on my mind is, is, you know, whatever you want out here.
We are a bit of a.
We're unique.
Yes. Particularly for. So, but it is something, this level of services unacceptable in my eyes. I figure we've got about a hundred retirees. We probably have nearly that many that are still on this plan. And so this is not something that's going to go away. We need to make adjustments as necessary.
Are there any complaints from non-retirees on the plan? People who are actively participating?
Not that I'm aware of. Lindsay?
Yeah, um, yeah, I have had one complaint from an active member who. Attempted to receive an estimate. And they provided me with the. With the notice that the estimate was completed and that they were gonna send it to the employee. And then it took another month and a half to actually get it to the employees from the company with several emails to them.
And then not necessarily a participant in the plan, but just as, as staff, and Matt mentioned. The, the issues we had with tax filings and compliance. You know, I've got, I just got another round of letters from the IRS. State of Idaho Bureau of. Their tax department and said, we're ready. And so I, I haven't gotten those yet, but I'm assuming that it's, you know, more quarterly filings. Or remittances that weren't paid. So.
So are they held accountable or is that us that's accountable?
Well, we are ultimately responsible.
Right.
So if they're a third-party administrator that, you know, there might be some legal recourse, but. If the filings and the remittances don't make it on time, we're, we are responsible for any fines or penalties. You know, and whether or not there's, there's a legal remedy to that with the third party, I guess I would have to defer that to.
Have to look it over and say.
Well, and I think my point to that is just that if we are, if we're gonna be on the hook, we need to be proactive and not wait any longer.
Well, we can't drain county and plan resources on fines that are incurred because our vendors are providing the service that they promised to provide.
I think if the con, if they have a contract and they're not holding their end of the bill, we should. Be able to.
Make a decision to. So I think it's become abundantly clear we need to change. So I would be motion to authorize staff to. Explore alternatives to Nationwide and N B S to providing those services.
Do the second and further discussion, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried.
Just to say, this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight, but we will look at it very thoughtfully. Probably won't be until after the first of the new year. Bring in solutions.
Well, the other thing I'm glad what we just did, and you said it takes time is because when I get calls and when I get people that ask. You know, I've been telling them, well, we're gonna take care of this without really knowing that we are. Now I can with faith, good faith, tell them. We are going to take care of this, you know. So I'm, that's why I'm glad, you know, it might take a while. And now, just so I know what's going on when people ask me, you know. I'm not shooting in the dark and not really knowing, you know, if we are doing anything or just they bite the bullet. This is what, this is life, guys, you know. So now I know. And so I'm glad, you know, and it may take time, that's fine.
And just, I mean, i- if you, as you have communications with retirees and that. One of the takeaways from a previous transition was the lack of notification. That's something we're anticipating. Provider to provide saying, hey, welcome to Nationwide, here's where this. None of that happened, so it came off as a very big surprise to our retirees. That's a commitment that I'd like to make right here on the record. We will have better communication if there is a change for companies, where the money's going. And we'll be sure to get that out at least thirty days' notice. So, so people can understand that. Work diligently to make sure any possible transition is much smoother than what we experienced eleven months ago.
Yeah, and you know, before we get a company in place that will take care of, and hopefully they will take care of. You know, I'm called customer service because of retirees and customers. Is if we do make sure we respond promptly to, to complaints we get, you know. You know. I don't mind them talking to me, you know. And I don't know whether I should be referring to someone else or get the answer from somebody else, but it's because. You know, I lived here forty-five years and there's a lot of retirees around here. So they know me. Like I'm at the post office. And they're ticked off. And so they talk to me. So that's why I bumped into a lot of these people. So. I don't know.
Yeah, just from somebody who's doing it on the frontline, I would really appreciate any complaints. Being directed or referred to H R because we don't always know about them. They don't always go directly to the source. Sometimes they just tell whoever is near or whoever they're comfortable with. And so if I, if we don't know about those complaints, then we can't actually address them if they're just being told to.
Okay.
So that would be really helpful.
Thank you for the direction.
Okay, next up is K, Rollin Digital Infrastructure Letter, recognition request. You've all read it. If you want to put your name on it. Or our names. Thoughts, Jeff? I'm putting your name on the letter.
So Justin, if you had the gentzer, look at this.
Don't believe I have, no. Apologize.
No, it's fine. Just it seems a little odd.
It does.
Yes.
Seems like.
Anybody knows, can we ever do anything similar? You know, yes. Our interaction with the business has been very limited. They meant to our land use, right? In that sense, you know, this is somebody that's been here a lot, where in twenty years. Truly have a good relationship with them. We don't know what kind of parkers they will be in the long term. I guess with saying that, Dave, I guess I just talked about something that I'm not proposing, because we don't have the.
Yeah, but looking for, I think you, so I guess the response for the legal aspect, housing issues, submitting, I also agree that. One, I don't recall doing this before, of almost like one, this appears, I remember saying what Temple Economic Development Corporation is, it's almost. Same thing I imagine in Oregon. It's one government entity saying, hey, you guys should also do business with this company. We're government and be giving our. Guidance that you'd be okay if you do this too. I can't imagine we've ever done that in the past. And it might be that the companies. Have said, hey, we've done a project in this county, this county. If you have questions, reach out to them, you'll talk to them, but I don't recall between a letter like this. It might happen in the future, but, you know, I haven't seen that done.
Can I ask Daisy? So they, they do say that they have had extensive contact with county planning.
The, their attorneys have actually been really easy to work with, but I agree. I think that it makes more sense for it to be more objective that, yes, we, they went through the land use process. We didn't have any major issues, sort of like a more objective thing rather than. We didn't have any major issues, sort of like a more objective thing rather than it being, they're a great community, they're everything.
Thank you. So I don't know who would be the contact, but you know, if they reached out again or if wanted to be proactive. You know, have them reach out to either Tim or a planning or Matt as the administrator and say, you know. Temple could, you know, contact somebody and they could give us their assessment of what it is.
This is simple in your history with them, they're a good community.
Do I think, whether it came to me or what, but do I answer them and tell them what we want them to do?
Well, they they actually asked us if we want to change, change the letter as needed. So we could basically say that, you know, we, we did work with them on a land use and we didn't have any issue with that land use, and that's pretty much, I mean, that would be as far.
Well, then basically period.
Yeah, that that's far as, and and to that.
Sounds like one of those HR calls.
I'm not comfortable signing the letter that they brought forward. I don't know what the benefit would be of signing a letter that says that you worked with them through the land use issue and there was no issues on our side, but I mean, beyond that, I can't see.
And on top of that, we haven't even. Discuss, I mean, they've met with us, but we haven't discussed details of a SIP or pilot or anything.
We have, well, they've 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 met with me as a president.
Yeah.
There was about eight of them, and I think it was me, and I've talked to them all, they want all, they knew all about it already, but they still asked me stuff, you know. They've done their whole board, but as far as. It was just that, they just questioned me about things, and. And uh I didn't ask them, I asked them a few questions, but that was about it, there wasn't a lot of. You know, interaction and done fulfilling what they said they were gonna do, you know, and I'll check the map box, I think. It was just a sit-down right here, you know, I'm talking for an hour, that's all my interaction with them is, so.
I guess for recommendation, we have the boards uncomfortable, no action, really, we've done it to approve it, since as I were comfortable approving the letter. Um, I imagine Hoover was sent to. I or county administrator, you know, we could be responding saying it wasn't signed, but if Temple. Economic Development Corporations has questions with our work, feel free to reach out to Plan Department, County Administrator, who else you think? And that that probably way of doing, and I'm way of doing it, and I imagine if. Um, the company Rowan says, hey, we, we really kinda want that letter, can we do a really pared down letter, well, then maybe that can come back for the board. That way, but seems like the response would be, didn't get approved, but we're always available if Temple people wanna reach out to ask our involvement. And how we.
But I think Matt should write it, so they don't think it's a legal thing we're getting into with them.
Although you don't know, the prior one people, the prior ones.
Yeah, so Matt, would you be willing to do that?
Sure. So I'll contact them.
Next up is consideration of acquisition, boring marks of representation department, eighteen D grant, provide a full HP operations.
You know that hard toughness? Yes.
I'm very close, folks in here, so, uh, and I'm here to ask for approval for apply for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven. Operation and maintenance grant through Oregon State Parks. This grant is one of the main sources of moral grant county which we park operated main, so it's a two-year grant. Uh, parks operate on this O and M grant since conception, um, two thousand and three. It's allowed the parks to operate and expand as well as with payroll, building maintenance, new trails, trail maintenance. Uh, purchasing the new equipment and work of the ADA within the parks. Um, the changes for this new O and M grant for uh twenty-five, twenty-seven will be the new personal. Uh, that was already approved. Uh, for payroll in this grant, um. Uh, keep up with the inflation, higher cost equipment, resources, and continue with making the parks the AD and and purchase the two new pro- bars. Fifteen hundreds, uh, which were needed by heavy duty rangers. It pays for the biggest portion of ODFR protection, the parks, which is slated to be around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars next year. So the numbers I'm giving you is as as a two-year part. But the grant pays for eighty percent with a twenty percent match from parks. Uh, twenty percent in parks and journey from camping fees, sale of goods, Oregon State Campground revenues, um, and volunteer labor. That's that's our match, twenty percent.
Are we, uh, are we gonna have to increase our fees for parks? Get into that, are we gonna?
We are, we're working on that, and this is part of this is 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 in this, is what I, is my my figures. Um, hasn't been cleared through you yet, um, as far as the the fees, but I it I took. What we kinda came up with to make these numbers, um. Uh, the grant is uh for one point four million fifty, one million four hundred and two thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars. For two years, with two hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars match, leaving the uh state parks paying in one million one hundred and sixty-two. Thousand five hundred dollars and a carryover, um, a hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, dollars from revenues in that two years is what my projected our income. So. That on this sheet here is is our our camping revenues, um. And they with with our our boost from last year, and these, those are estimated on the last full year. Of how many campsites and what campsites, we kinda worked that out to what with the raises would be. They we should be rate, should be making two but two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars your camping fees in months from, this this is just new HP part. It's not three parts, because this grant is just for the which we part.
It doesn't get customer order.
No, it does not.
I I guess I'd make a comment that I know that it's probably not in the best. Or at least for the parks part, they don't wanna raise the rate, but what I'll say is this, as a user. And as most users for OHP who drag around in a hundred thousand dollar truck pulling a hundred and twenty thousand dollar toy. With a seventy thousand dollar machine in the back, a ten percent increase on fees is not a big deal for them. To me, just my personal opinion, I don't think that raising the rates is gonna be a hard day for the users.
No, if Vance and I did work on it, we sat down and worked on that, and we came up with um some of the rates and. Um, I have them, but they need to go through.
So basically, they, Matt wanted to review them, we'll review them ourselves, um, there were three different levels. Of increases that we were suggesting, one was minimal, um, from staff, and the other was. Um, the other two were significant increases, um, I wouldn't say extremely significant, one was uh ten to. I wanna say twenty dollars um per level, and there's a variety of different items that um. We provide services for, and so uh there were, and the last one were were this significant, much significant more. Excuse me, much more significant of an increase, and so um we need to review that with Matt before we send it off to the. Um, Parks Committee for a review, and then once that they give their approval, and then that'll come to the VOC first probably. But we can, if you wish, show you all three different levels, um, and you can.
Yeah, and and these these numbers that were generated for these were not the extreme, okay? This is the mediocre ones that 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 you and I sat down with, kind of really enjoyed, and and I thought they would work. Um, they did scare me off and I'm cheap, so, um, and that was the numbers we came up with these revenues for.
I just wanted to have fun.
No, and we when you're paying six dollars a gallon for non-athletic field, if you raise it ten dollars for a trailer.
I don't think they're gonna have a big problem.
You know, I I really don't.
Will burn that much in field or mouth.
And I and I, you know, when this all came to the light here, within the last, oh, six, eight months, um, I was actually, I did. I talked to people at the county park and and see what their thoughts were, and and nobody had an issue, I really didn't have any issues. You're gonna, you're gonna get somebody hauled every time, I don't care what you're. That was kind of my spiel, is is there anything on this, um, the the. Budget worksheet that you had any questions on, um.
No, I just. It was good, since, you know, take the state money to um operate our parks, you know, I think that's always been a good. Point of very good, the terms of, you know, the pressure to support themselves, they had events. Through state grants and circuit, he said, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you guys are. Keeping the parks open and running them efficiently without having to put your hand out and ask for money, I think.
Thank you.
Matt, um, you do have a resolution that's included on this. Well, with the resolution which is required for the grant, I could just not have separate motion, just authorized me to. Uh, to uh sign any necessary documents that have the county, as this is over in J P thousand, which is my first session. So the question on the reservation, it's the forest state.
Oh, sorry. R two zero two four dash three.
Okay, so, your motion to allow Matt to. Sign off on.
What problem?
Well, I guess first we gotta figure that.
Right, that's all that's one thing, so I've moved for a resolution for R dash two zero two four dash three zero.
I will second.
Move the second, any further discussion, all in favor? Hi, all opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Then I'll make motion to on three. So maybe not as necessary for these grants.
I'll second.
Move the second, any further discussion, all in favor? Thanks, son.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
And Greg, if I'll get anything signed after this meeting and shot, I will hear Steve.
Thank you, Risha, you have, you have copy of that resolution.
There is, okay, we'll get this one.
Okay, next step would be update, consideration for circular management.
So, um, as as we've been going on with the design on the circuit course, the annex and Boardman. Um, just wanted to come through, we've had our uh our initial space analysis with the different groups, we've made some adjustments. Um, as we've uh done the uh geotech, I haven't got the official report back that. Everything looks scoped there, um, one of the things we just wanted to bring, what was currently being proposed on this. Uh, we're looking at a two or three story, that's one thing that they're finalizing, um. Based on the site and the requirements for parking and and the security parking for the uh uh for the Sallyport and such. Um, a couple of things that we are looking at on here, um. When the courthouse was down here, we were gonna relocate the justice court and everything that, as it's up in Boardman now. We are considering having the justice court relocate to Boardman and and be part of the. Uh, provide a single point for all our work, uh, operations up there. It reduces how much uh security we need to do, consolidates that, and uh just for ease of mind for. Anybody who's having to go to court, they know, they go there and the security can say, oh, it's justice right there. Circuit Court upstairs, and we can take care of it that way, this does add uh a bit of cost to it, uh, because it does. It is a a full court area there and the size of the space increases. One of the other things is we tried to keep the uh the other county offices to a minimal, we do have some uh. Some space for uh juveniles to kind of meet with, uh, with anybody who's, any participants that they're dealing with. Uh, but not a full-fledged office, the other thing though is that we found out that the uh public defenders. Uh, there's an initiative through the state to make public defender state employees, and that it would be nice to have offices. In the in the annex for the public defenders, um, while this is one that we wanna explore, particularly with the state. Any additional funding to provide that, uh, it would be, I don't think it would be through uh through the court system. So, but we would be planning for that possibility because they're phasing that in over the next five years. And our construction will be two years, so rather than immediately, you have to add on to the building, we just figured to include that at this point. So as we look at the breakdown that's provided in the cover sheet, we uh uh DLR, uh, the architects and. Uh, our design team, our project managers will be in on December fourth to do a full presentation. Kind of approvals, they'll have uh revised budgetary estimates on uh as far as just for scope and s- square footage of that. And uh we'll be laying out how the project uh goes forward. Uh, one point is uh tomorrow afternoon, I do have a meeting on the uh funding. Document which solidifies the twelve point seven five that they have, and there's also an additional two point five. Uh, the judge Hill's pushing for for this project in in the current state legislatures. Do help assist with these items, so, um. As we go over the next month and and finalize items, we just wanted to bring it up to the VOC, if there is any, um. If relocating the justice court with the annex is acceptable, or if that's something that you'd like to pull out. Uh, and uh remain separate and arrogant, um, and just just to make sure that. You're aware of that determination before we get too far down the the lane on that.
I myself, I would rather not, we put this as a circuit court. Annex building, we didn't say anything about, you know, expanding it into county's deal or. Adding other things, you know, this is what we told the public it was going to be, so I think it's kind of disingenuous now. To if we were at, I haven't, if I was to go back and tell them, well, no, which is their mind. We're we're making this into something else now, so, because we did say it was going to be, you know, um. Originally, that's what we said, this is what this is gonna be, it's, you know, we're not moving anything, it's just gonna be a. So that's my, I I would do first.
So I guess my effective data is that they they just moving Judge Deal would be in in Boardman instead of here again. And I'm most of this in conversations with Judge Deal and Judge Hill, you know, they brought up the point that, um. You know, if they were together, because you do get somebody coming in, they just know they have to go to court, they don't know if it's circuit court or the justice court. And, you know, somebody drives to one place, and then they find out they have to drive back to.
And the other, like, the other conversation there was if it's the cir- if the circuit court uh did house the justice court, that it would open up that other room for. Uh, larger. Meanwhile, spacing space in here.
Uh, yeah, I I don't, I've thought about these things, I'm just thinking about. What I told them, so, you know, it's, I have started having other opinions and other thoughts, so that's, that's what I think. That's what I told the public. When maybe it could be presented. It's a it's a subsidy, fine, but we don't have any offices there, even if it is from there.
So, all of that. Only reservation we have about it is, I wanna make sure that somehow, you know, we would, Judge Steel. Playing about your schedule in the front place, that somehow, you know, if he would relocate there, that we don't have the schedule in front of there. Um, and what the space allocation for them is, they would have completely separate courtrooms.
Okay.
Um, separate, uh, they they might be able to share the uh. Large conference room, which would would be for jury selection and that, but there'd be separate jury rooms and such, so as far, you know, technically, we could have. Both courts running the same day, same time, with knowing that uh they are completely separate. Yeah, that is, you know, I think it's, um, as we've discussed before, this is a, based a fifty.
Yeah, that is, you know, I think it's, um, as we've discussed before, this is a, based a fifty year building looking. Into the future. Growth and stuff. Want junior brother about bringing up office space at the arrogant building. Just the county continues to grow, the acquisitions, you know, providing services up in where the population is. I see that as a benefit. So I get your point.
Okay, do we need a resolution or consensus from the job here?
Well. Yeah, I mean, the. The relocation of the justice court, while we originally kind of figured in and. For down south with all our other things, it is a little bit bigger than it was previous. That portion is almost a three million dollar, uh, portion of the overall, all, all, overall project. Um, and so this is one of those things where, uh, with the relocation, the Boardman as an annex, we wanted to make sure. Um, as we move forward, we're, uh, we're posting for our construction manager, uh, general contractor. Uh, that will be decided by next meeting, uh, but it will be posted, so just to let you know that that will be out. Uh, but this is, uh. If you don't move the justice court, it can be seen as a cost cutting, uh, thing on the project. If you do, it could be seen as planning forward and, you know.
It was a cost cutting, it's more of a maintaining what you said, and if you do it, it's a cost increase on what you said. Well, you're adding, because you're going to come back and, you know, you said you're going to get, uh, uh, an estimate on the cost, so you're bringing that back to us at that point.
Yes.
But okay, it's going to cost three million dollars, that's three million dollars we weren't going to spend.
Oh, in our original project for the courthouse here or at the mill site, we did include. Uh, the justice court build out just a little bit bigger.
I mean, it's worth, so we're going, I'm just bringing that up is, it's not, yeah. To me, it's a additional box. Which is not bad, you know, I mean, I've told you, you know, that I, you, you, you should, you think for the future. You know, I'm, I'm just looking at, making sure we, we, if there is public concern about it, that we tell them why we're spending through the logs here. Of our, because states and.
That's the other aspect of it, this would be fully on the county's time, that portion of it. Um, and so that, that is also.
Forward, just, you know, based on our experience and how we roll things out is, make sure you, you have your justification. And your thought process, just what we talked about here, ready to go, you know, why are you doing this? Well, we're doing this because this is. That's what I think is a word. So, you know, it was, uh. Not transparent, so, but anyway.
I, and just ask for feedback from the board of commissioners, I mean, you'd like to push forward with the more or less a. Kind of final idea of space areas, this is the. I've slimmed it down as much as I can, we didn't put juvenile parole probation. Uh, but that justice court is, is the question with the, with the role of the annex, so. Uh, we asked for the B O C, um, input on that and direction, so when we come back on December fourth, we kind of have. The final spatialization that we've developed and, uh, they can present on.
Okay, I think you got that today, isn't it? Your feedback?
Not sure. Oh, I got feedback, I don't have a direction. I do have feedback, uh, what, what, what is the board's direction?
It might be a motion, uh, to ask staff to include, uh, the justice court in the, uh, planning. And cost for the new recording annex building. Um, using that even additionally.
So I'm, I will. Put it on public record that my decision when I made it, which was the swing vote, obviously, it was kind of a. Single seat decision to be made. When I made that decision, it was with the. Understanding that if we move the justice court to Boardman, then it would give us more room in the arrogant building per. Per space that was dearly needed, um, that was part of the reason I voted the way I did, so like me, being that person, I will make the motion. That, uh, we direct staff to look at the annex building in here again, in Boardman, sorry, uh, with the additional justice, uh. Justice.
And bring that costs us some steps.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Move in secondary, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion for.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, stuff is our January twenty twenty five meeting schedules.
Can we have the last? Sure, so, um, the board meets on the first and third Wednesday of every month. The first Wednesday of January for twenty twenty five happens to fall on a holiday. On New Year's Day when county offices are closed, so I was looking for direction, um. With. How you'd like to schedule all the January meetings?
I, that's pretty simple, I would recommend that we use the second, fourth weeks in that month under the circumstances. My recommendation.
So we, we can the twenty second then?
Yeah, we keep it one second.
We do have five, uh, five Wednesdays in that month, so it doesn't put us back, back until February, I mean.
No. This, the fifth Wednesday, I shouldn't be. And I guess. You Dave?
Here, like he was going to get.
He really just gives us.
That's only for the payments, distributions, but this is okay. Okay, verbal.
Oh, you just, you were going to give a word?
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, good, yeah. No, that's. That'd be great. Oh, yeah, I see that, it's usually it's a monthly thing.
Yeah, the two distributions are monthly and then. Yes, it's the hourly one. So. You hear from me pretty frequently on the, on the major projects that we have going on, uh, wanted to just touch on. Staffing first, um, we, uh, the risk and procurement, uh, manager position that closed last week, we're reviewing. Uh, applications that were submitted, be scheduling, uh, some interviews hopefully, uh, within the very near future. To, uh, to talk with the applicants for that position. Uh, we have another, uh, we have a position that was just posted, uh, October twenty eighth, uh, Mark County Technician, uh. Uh, position has become, uh, vacant as of tomorrow. Uh, so we'll be looking for, um, uh, replacement for her. And, uh, in terms of, uh, projects. There hasn't been any, uh. No, no significant update yet on the E R P system project, uh, just working on. Getting the contracts together and, and, uh, statement to work together for, for that. Um, and then we also have the business continuity and disaster recovery, uh, plan project, uh, for. Our technology and information, and, uh, that one. Uh, was on, uh, we've been on track and on schedule for that project, they had, uh, initial draft document, but there were some things that, uh, I wanted the. Our consultants to kind of flesh out and cover a little bit, a little bit more detail, so, uh. We're probably created a few week delay on that timeline to have them go back and rewrite a couple of sections of the initial, uh, planning document that. That'll ultimately support the, the policy that comes before the board. Um, in our terms of our audits, our fiscal twenty four audit is, uh, is still in progress. Um, I don't have any, uh. Any indication of, of the timing of, of completion, whether, I am hoping that we'll stay on track in terms of our, our schedule. Um, but as we saw, uh, with our prior audit, there were a number of things that seemed to keep coming up. Uh, that being said, I am happy to report that the. Fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, single audit, uh, was completed. Uh, uh, that one had, had a number of delays, uh, and I'll be, uh, bringing that, uh. To the board, uh, at the, uh, end of December meeting, uh, for review and. And consideration of those audit reports, I can, I, I can tell you there were no, there are no issues or findings with the, with the single audit, and again. The single audit is a requirement, um, if the entity expends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funding. And, uh, they are, are compliance with the federal regulations for the, uh, expenditure, or regulations for the expenditure of federal funds, so. Um, and, uh, outside of that, this last month, been working with Matt and, and I T to get this, uh. A V system kind of up and going, and the, like I said this morning, we're about ninety percent there on that, so, um, hopefully by December we'll be. Close to go a hundred percent. Any questions?
I think it'll be good to hear any feedback from people that are on Zoom on how this worked and.
If it's. Absolutely, we'd really appreciate that, uh, because obviously we don't see the video and hear the audio, uh, being in the room, so, yeah.
I've heard so far from at least one person, you know, staff member that styled in that the audio and video are far better so far than the past. We're going to narrow in to make sure it's still, the audio is good for all speakers and stuff and try to work on the need be, but so far it's been thumbs up.
Good.
Okay, Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, just to start, I'd like to, uh, respond to public comment this morning on the concerns that. Uh, on Butterman Canyon, uh, I did hear. From Bill Van Squake, who is here this morning, about his concerns up there, uh, tried to contact. Uh, the trucking company that was hauling logs, I failed to make contact, so I went down and checked out the road and, um. I could see where there had been some damage, but, uh, uh, the logging company had gone in as Bill reported and, and made the repairs. So I didn't have any concerns, um, as of right now, we'll continue to monitor it and, uh, Bill's really good about calling when he has a concern. So I won't have to drive out there, it's quite a ways. Um, and I had forgotten about the issue in two thousand nineteen, understand what his concerns are, because I do remember that road failing. Um, uh, it wasn't just trucking, but that, remember all the snow that year and the melt was terrible, we had trouble all over the county, but. So, yeah, I was glad that, that he brought that up.
So I guess I'll have a question on that, how, how do you feel about? Having responsibility of making the call to close that road to a. To a logger that, if that is needed.
I don't have a problem making that decision, if needed, I, it's something I would rather avoid, and we have. Trucking all over this county, it's not oversized, it's not over dimensional, they're legal loads. I would, I would really like to avoid ever shutting down, uh, a common one would be spring thaw, but. I haven't even done that since I've been here, so we got, you know, all kinds of.
What are our legal obligations to close a Kennedy Road, I mean, I know we can do it, we do lots of them.
We do do at times when it's that situation, you know that, but, um, requirement to do it or just our ability to do it?
Uh, well, yeah, the ability, I mean, I know the requirements are simple.
But the, I guess, yeah, we can, if it's a danger, I think the issue here is, um, saying it's caused by this, we're, we're closing it down. To this particular company or for this size of vehicle, and that's the issue, I suppose, maybe weight restrictions at times, maybe not for a certain user. But maybe on the type of vehicle or weight, depending on the road conditions, we've done that before in other roads, I guess.
We have.
Some might be the option to do. Um, and it's not a matter of me just going out and putting a sign, I have to bring it to the board.
Right.
Yeah, unless it's an emergency, obviously, high water, something fails.
Yes.
But to restrict travel, I have to bring it here. So there's a orus for that, I don't have memorized.
I just want to make sure that we kept that out. Being transparent, because, yeah, there are, there are going to be people who will be upset if you close the road.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, that's a thing, yeah.
Right, so.
We dealt with that, yeah, would, that would be more we talked about for sure.
Try to keep them open.
Sorry, that's a lot. If we closed it, I would assume it'd be more, to more than just loud trucks, it'd be to any truck over a certain weight.
Correct, yeah, that'd be the weight restriction type of things, or size of vehicles, I think, how we normally would do it.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Just, it gets to be kind of slippery slope, like. In my, it's, it's, right, I imagine during wheat harvest, you know, we hear road reports about blowouts.
Yes.
That's right, so if we did it on this road for this time. You know, we could have somebody coming in during harvest and going. Uh, again, it just seems like a slippery slope to begin.
Yeah.
I think it's best to, um, oftentimes I, I don't get reports, um. Until it's bad, uh, sometimes bad, mostly because of the, sometimes the fear of it being closed. I would rather know and go fix it, and, 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 and that's been changing over the years. I'm getting, I'm getting more and more calls about, hey, it's starting to go bad.
Right.
Rather than now it's a.
It's a lot cheaper to, to fix it before it's completed.
So I guess, I think would it be helpful if. You knew that, and certain activities such as this was going to get started, so you could go out there and kind of assess the level of road and go. Oh, there's a little bit here, we firm this up and there won't be a problem, or if nothing else, it puts you on notice to be alert to that. We may need to adjust this a little.
I love those phone calls, I have some trucking companies do that. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're doing a logging operation in this area, do you have any concerns? Those are great calls to get.
Yes. It's our requirement now, but it would be nice, right, that clears it up ahead of time, at least know that anyone is working on it and then check things out, I mean.
And it sounded like it was, there were four or five different logging companies that were going to the loan on fire to log, that it was just the one particular. Uh, company that was using that road, everybody else was using eighty four. Rather than going.
That's right.
Yeah, so. Alternate routes are, if there's an alternate route. That makes it a little easier to, to close a road and say, this is the route you need to take, that's what everybody else is doing, so what would have been like if. All four of the logging companies used that road versus just the one.
It would have been bad.
Right, right, so.
Yeah, try to look at it as case by case.
Yeah.
Basis.
I mean, when I read the letter, like, those are some of my concerns.
So, yeah, and I, there's been, there have been times where I've asked a, a logging company, could you take an alternate route? Always have good luck with that too, so, I don't have an issue with this right now.
Right, that's the way that, we can handle that way, that's much better than closing the road.
Yeah. Anything else on that matter?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, for the month of October, we've been working, uh, hard on cattle guards, it's been. It's been, uh, a season of cattle guard repairs and cleaning. And, uh, it's typical this time of year to get, well, usually in September, like, start getting requests to clean them out. We ask for a little more time, it's, it's difficult to drop everything and go start cleaning cattle guards. So what we did, um, this month is, you know, we got through the request, we cleaned them out and said, let's just keep going. Let's drive to county and just start cleaning them out to avoid this next year and just going to start doing it that way, so it's not, uh, so the. You know, the ranchers are getting what they need and it's not a burden to us, so I'm going to try this new approach, so. We've been out making lots of repairs to cattle guards. Um, now, continue on in, into Nov- November. We also have been finding, um, foundations around the county from cattle guards that have been removed. In the past and just the foundations left are starting to pop up, so I have the same crew is out getting rid of those concrete foundations. Um, which is nice, because the greater edges hit them and they can be dangerous, so. Uh, we've also been working on quite a few culverts, um, a lot of them are real skinny from, you know. How it used to be with the skinny equipment, stuff gets wider, the roads get wider, the culverts don't get extended, so we're, we're continuing to work on those.
Um. Are those full replacements or just additions, Steve Chan?
We, we extend them if they're in decent shape, yeah, that, we have, we do find them where they're, it's just better to replace them. Uh, staff and I have been working on a significant road and construction sign order, you've heard me report over the last. Well, I've been reporting on it for, since I've been here, but just a lack of finger signs around the county. Um, we finally have an inventory, um, it's, it's a, it's a pretty significant order, so we're getting bids, bids for those. Um, and it, hopefully this, this winter, um, we'll have a lot of new finger signs out there. And other signs as well. Um, we reclaimed a section of road on Brenner Canyon, if familiar where that is off of Ray Creek, um, used to. Um, we reclaimed a section of road on Brenner Canyon, if familiar where that is off of Ray Creek, um, used to. Uh, utilize a pit up there that we haven't for years and years and, and the asphalt's just been failing. And so we went in and a couple of guys went in and, and reclaimed it back to gravel. And that went well, actually, we took two days. All our road strip being, well, we've completed what we can, we've had some issues with our new paint machine. That hopefully we have, have repaired and fixed, however, it got too cold, so we, we didn't get everything done. The paint's in warm storage and we'll finish it this spring. There's a wooden bridge on Sanford Canyon, we redact. It's somewhat of on a corner, so all the equipment, all the big heavy stuff, when it hits that bridge, it's always pushed into one side. Um, and so that's been replaced last, the, the year it got, two thousand eighteen was the last time we did that.
Is there plans to do that? Different in the future?
Made the planks wider, that'd be nice to get rid of the wooden deck.
Well, that's a massive, is there, is there plans for that in your road plan?
Yeah. So the Bridge Master Plan, um, is not complete, I got a quote to build the Bridge Master Plan and, uh, Matt and I are working. Through that to get the Bridge Master Plan done, and yes, it will address that, that wooden bridge. We're back crushing again, Crusher Contractor. Um, came in at the end of the last fiscal year to get some stuff done, which I was thankful for, they left for the summer and they're back, uh, they're back crushing for us. Um, it should be done. By the end of Sep, end of December, so we have some shiprock, we're getting crushed and a lot of road rock, trying to get caught back up, just from a lack of. Inventory. All the, we're pretty much ready for snow season. Um, the gravers, of course, are all ready and, uh, we've been getting the, the dump trucks set up with Plows and Sanders. They're ready to go when the snow flies, we've done a little bit of plumbing. Up high on Willow Creek. Um, for the airport, reported last month about the Young Eagles event that, and it did take place October fifth, the weather, uh, panned out. Um, all the registered youths showed up and they all got to participate and sounds like it was a, a great success. Um, and Sandy has already arranging an event for the spring.
We did find out that, uh, the spring event, which was canceled for weather, had about seventy, some of people signed up for it. The one held this, uh, this fall, because it was during hunting season, only had about sixteen. But they all showed up and had a great time, and so for the first time there, they're looking to hold them more in the spring to. Get all the people who are interested rather than having a divided attention on those.
Thank you, Matt. For weeds, I don't, you know, Corey gives his quarterly report, uh, but I'll just, uh, report that he has been, Corey's been, um, working on the roadside spraying throughout the county. And, uh, the, the recent, uh, rain that we've had has been helping that significantly. And, uh, he also is, continues to work on weed management for the energy facility projects, always going. Um, for solid waste. The Sandy's made some modifications to the recycle bins on Riverside and Hetner over here. Um, we had some issues, uh, because it can be difficult getting the cardboard in those, the people just leaving them. Uh, next to the, the dumpsters that they get immense, they've been modified, so it's easier to get. Cardboard in there and a camera's been installed, so that's been kind of a burden and, and you know, it's great to have those out twenty-four seven. Um, but those types of dumping things can happen, so hopefully that'll, that'll solve that or most of it. Now that's the end of my report, are there any questions? Okay, all right, thanks Commissioners. Thank you.
Well, I guess I would say I did hear that Baker Lane was. Patched and.
Yes.
Better than it's been.
Thank you.
The buses aren't afraid to.
Get up there.
Yeah, to go up the hill anymore.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, uh, we did get it patched and, um. We have surveyors out there, not at the moment, but the plans here re, uh, in the near future to mark edge a right away for us. So that we can start that widening project. Thank you.
All right, next up would be Sue, if you're waiting.
Well, I can say good afternoon to everyone now, um, yeah. Um, so I wanted just to give a, a fair overview of what happened, uh, during fair and. What has been happening this fall, so we had about, um, approximately a similar number of people attend fair this year, which was about. Forty-five hundred people. Um, we had a hundred and thirty-six animals, uh, go through the auction, this was two more. Than last year, but, um, like we said, we are at max load there, we can't get a lot more animals in there. Our auction amounts are up, um, about. Hundred thousand was eight hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five. Brought in the auction, four H and FFA exhibits were up. As far as the exhibitors, we had two hundred and one exhibitors this year from the four H and FFA. Um, our actual exhibits. Were up quite a bit, one thousand six hundred and eighty-four exhibits came through compared to one thousand three hundred last year. Our sponsorship, we brought in about thirty-four thousand dollars worth of sponsorship compared to the sixteen last year, so I was real happy about that. Um, plus, we brought in a lot more awards, people were, that was one of my goals last year, was trying to get more involvement. So we brought in a lot more sponsorship of specific awards, like the baking and the canning and things like that, and the follow-up was much better. Uh, so that, um. Ended up becoming great and I'm actually having people call me now wanting to sponsor more. Uh, we lost the Wheat League last year, but the, um. Uh, foundation, the Wheat Foundation now wants to come in and like triple the awards from last year, which is really exciting, so. Anyway, um. So that food vendors, we had extra one this year, sale vendors, we doubled from last year. And our folk community booths were booked, which was nice, cause last year we only had half. Um, on the downside, I think our sponsor dinner was down, so our board is. Contemplating what do we do to increase that and improve that. So, um, I want to say thank you a lot, uh, to. Internal involvement, both health, the health district and the public health, uh, the road department all help to make. Our fair's success, we had the ADN flu that came through, we had to do a lot of extra stuff to make that. Okay, and successful, and it all got accomplished through volunteers like, um. Mitch Ashbeck made a trip all the way to the valley to get the curtains so that we could do the correct separation. And he pretty much donated his time, his trailers and everything to make that happen, and, um, so. Just we, we all worked together and great compliments on the road. And we brought in hospitality room that was sponsored by, um. The public health and from, um. The therapy area, and that was a great success, it was extensively used, we even had some handicapped people that came in. And that is the struggle down at the fair, getting anyone, and. We were able to come up and get a wheelchair for him and it was just well received, so hopefully we will continue that, um, this year. And so with that. This fall, uh, we. I did, um, do the grant that I got through the Art Coalition, um, we had a few thousand dollars left over, so I brought in a, uh, the Florida really wants to have more activities down at the fair. Uh, so it's not sitting, I don't want to say stagnant, but just to have more community involvement. So we developed, uh, a fall sun at the fair, so we brought in three professional artists. We brought in Michelle Hopper, who is the artist who won the Pendleton Roundup competition this last year, she's fabulous. She came in and had an art, um, kind of an art night with painting, we had, um, a boardman group. That came down for sewing, quilting. And then my last group was Cynthia Winberg came in with a floral arrangement. And anyway, we had a whole day where people could come in, they signed up, it was all free, but that's what we used the money for. And, um, I think it made it in the paper and I have pictures here of, of different people, so. Um, I just think it was great, we had a lot of great, um, compliments, we had kids from. Twelve years all the way up to some elderly people in their eighties that came, so it was a wide range of individuals. So hopefully, maybe we can do it again next year, so we are also looking at another. Maybe, uh, during fair, we had a team dance that was brought up and that was a great success, so. They're talking, maybe we can do another dance, a winter dance, like right after the new year type thing. Uh, before school starts, so we're looking into that, um. We just came back from the Oregon Fair Association, um, this year, last year I had to go by myself. Which is not a problem, but there's just a lot going on and it's hard to hit the sessions with only one person, I miss out on a lot, so. This year, both Tony Clements and, um, our board member, Kira Klein went as well, so we were able to split. Um, and do things, some highlights, Tony was able to attend the dirt class, um, which was focused. On, uh, the arenas and how to prepare them, what to do with the soils, that, uh, things like that. And he stated that he learned a lot about the strict requirements of the depth of soil, sizes of soil, amount of watering. And how it affects the different events, which we want to bring in more for cow cutting to raining to barrel racing. And I guess a new trend is to get back into power horse bulls. So bringing in the draft horses and doing power bulls, so. Anyway, so that was good, uh, Kira found the marketing workshop was wonderful, she also went to a volunteer. Workshop and securing vendors and entertainment, she said she got a lot out of that and really enjoyed the key speaker, which was, um. Beers from the Pendleton Roundup came and talked to us, that also the president of, uh, um, PRCA came in and visited about. Uh, hospitality, uh, and finding unique events to bring into your community. And really working with partnerships to help build, and he said, find your events, make them simple, but unique and from the heart. And so we, we got a lot out of that, and so that's one of the things I'm working on is, is pulling in. That partnership. Um, and I've got some ideas, uh, for next year, so, um. Some things on the horizon till I come again, is I'm working on a proposal to bring back a queen. For our fair rodeo, um, of course, we have our arena. A wall that hopefully when the new. Uh, person is hired, we can get that off and running, we did bring in some money from. A business Oregon, about fifty-three thousand dollars that we're hoping to use that for, um. And one of the things on the horizon is we're having issues with the roof now of the sheep bar. Supposedly the structure's okay, um, but we want to verify that, but possibly needing. A new roof, so we're looking at that, it's still in the discussion area, um. We, the board has voted not to do the bull riding again this year, um, but instead we do have a budget for it, but instead. To possibly look at another activity, but I'm going to the St. Patrick's Committee, um. We have some ideas, we just want to see how we can work together again as a partnership. Um, so that's something I'm working on and, um. One of the things that I learned from O, O, OFA is, um, we need to be doing more digital, uh, marketing. So I'm looking into that and looking at improving our premium book, making it look more like a traveler's guide. It's really interesting, I actually gave, uh, the book that I would like to mimic was from Grant County. And, uh, I gave that to, um. Uh, Sykes down at, uh, Chris, and to see if he can. Work with us to do something like that, but that's the way it's set up, it's more of a traveler's guide, where can you go to eat? In Morro County, what is there to do in Morro County? Um, what are the businesses in Morro County? And so it's set up, the whole beginning is like that, and then articles of interest, there was three, four articles in it, and then in the end. There's a whole nother section and then the premium books just in the middle. And so it's really put out as more of, uh, as people come in, they grab that. And so I'm looking into that to see if I can do it, and we're also, Vince is working with, uh. Trying to see if I can get an intern position. Um, my idea is hopefully we can focus on that premium book, because that takes. A lot of work, especially if I'm going to change it like that, so. Anyway, that's on the horizon, something that we're looking into and, um. So that's about it, any questions?
He was very busy and had great plans to move the fair forward.
Yeah, I'm talking too, yeah, yeah, we have a, a theme contest that's going back out, it was successful last year, so I'm doing it again. But sending a lot of them out to, instead of the schools. Uh, four H and FFA groups. I'm gonna see if I get a little bit more participation than I did at the schools, so.
I spent a lot of time out there with the grandkids. Your petting the sheep exhibit was pretty good. Rubbing the hogs.
Yeah.
You have to get up close with the animal.
Yeah.
They had a good time, I was out there.
Yeah, good, good. Any questions?
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, Minister's Report, Minister's Report. Yes, um, there's a few points I, uh, wanted to give an update on, um, first of all, we have, um. For Westland, uh, project with the, uh, Business Oregon address that we have going. Uh, we did interview a, uh, tech slash engineer for. That's kind of a full service to my architect, sure they put in a proposal for both the feasibility study as well as the public outreach. We really, uh, I think they're very capable for the engineering study and, uh, for the public outreach, uh. Particularly with bilingual, uh, aspect, we were looking for another option and Rural Engagement Vitality Center. Uh, prepared a proposal and, uh, they're a fairly new, uh, community-based organization that recently, uh. Separated from the Eastern Oregon, uh, University and has created their own five oh one C three, they're the ones who helped perform that. Of the transit, uh, survey study, they got the award, and so we'd like to, we're planning to go with them. Uh, I'm working on getting them awarded, if the sizes of the contracts are small enough that they don't come through BOC, but did want to give you a, a note on that. Uh, Commissioner Drago was part of the interview process for Meyer Architecture and that, and, uh, we followed up, Cameron and I with, uh, with Brad. Vision by time, so I need to get that under contract. Dave and Kira and, uh, start seeing action in, in December, January on, on both those fronts. Um, the other thing is, I do have items, probably more business item than apologies, we did get a request from the county assessor. Um, for some additional time help, he has some newer employees with this, uh, tax, uh. Process right now, he was hoping to have a former employee who'd been covering for, and helped recently. Um, to come back and cover, so spring within his budget could do it, however, it kind of interesting, local, um. Processes, we hired her back, she has to go down to, you know, the step one through four, and she was on step twelve. And we'd like to, uh, to hire her that it's only for about thirty, thirty, thirty-two hours for the next couple of weeks, but we, I wanted to bring that up. But we, I wanted to bring that up to the VOC, see if you wanted to, uh, to approve that. This is for Patricia Hughes, who's worked in the assessors off in tax collector office previously and it helped out during the transitions. Uh, well, when we didn't have people this last year, but in the new budget, she's not, uh, it wasn't anticipated. And so uh, uh, I talked with HR, policy's pretty much straightforward that I can authorize anything above step four. And so uh, but we would like to get her engaged in. During this very busy time of tax collecting then. Um, does the VOC have any reticence on that or uh, do they ask for a motion for approval on that?
That's what I mean.
We don't have any issues with it. Those are the, I'm honest, just in the process. It said it wasn't, you know, listed on the agenda.
And this came up yesterday, so it is unfortunately uh, just something couldn't be really posted on the agenda.
I mean, I would say the process would have been, might probably have been maybe added to the agenda. Of course, normally, normally we would do, we might have to be getting. And then include before then the business items or past that. I mean, the board can take the action. There could be, um, it's just more of a risk analysis. Is the person gonna say, I want this person, I want this position overturned. This decision because it wasn't valid. That's the only, I think that's the most aspect that come up. Um, but it's just more, so that's the only risk, right? Exactly. So it's a court board, which maybe that's fine, but the normal process probably would have been first priority, of course, is setting it. For the twenty-four hour notice for the agenda item. Second fallback, you don't normally do is adding it as a business item to their beginning, listing it on there. And this is that third fallback. If the board has concerns at all, it could be, says a special meeting with a call in and take, you know, two minutes. But it's still taking staff time to set that to do it. But that'd be another way to correct it by saying, hey, we're uncomfortable. Can we come back tomorrow, you know, tomorrow at, you know, two o'clock? Give our notice filing still and do a special meeting for that purpose. But it's up.
What's our timeframe? Taxes are here now? Yeah, taxes are here now. I mean, he was, uh, needed a start in the starting. I mean, this week, so it's been, I just had the call yesterday at three.
In the past, we've always done special. I, I really hate to go down.
Yeah, I'm, it's very special meeting for sure. So why massive timeframe, um, and if we did the calling. I said these tomorrow, most of the day.
If it becomes common knowledge, then we can do this.
And this is a part-time, very part-time position. It sounds like thirty-two hours, thirty-two hours, but that's still. Technically a rehire, so that means if it falls underneath these, these type of.
And, and yes, doing the, doing it the right way and the simple things, small things is what's. Two times. This, this board commissioner, this board commissioners have done a good job by trying to set that as a process every time. And, and being available for special meetings like this, then we just follow protocols.
You know, I've been trying to, I've had, had people approach me after the deadline, trying to getting things on the agenda. Not very, you know, long after, don't know, because we're going to try to hold to that. I just.
Like the idea of following kind of process there. Yeah. Whatever. Post the idea. So what I'd, what I'd like to do is then we'll get a very short special session called tomorrow afternoon if you're available. But it'll take like five minutes. Yes.
I'll, I will, I will be available for one or after two thirty.
It looks like with our timing, we could do either one of those, but it'd be really tight to do it before one, so I would prefer.
Or Friday.
Or Friday.
He's having to turn it up even Friday morning, give the notice time to do that and have it take care of.
It only takes two of us too.
Um, tomorrow morning, like. Well, tomorrow morning. It's too short. We have to have two in four hours.
Well, it's not really a basis for it. It may could be, but we don't go down that page.
So um, if I'll work with Valerie on setting up a very short special meeting, just taking care of this. And so just the volume of it, they could have some capacity, just want to be sure. So I'll do this for that. Um, the other item that we have is just wanted to kind of update. The commission, we had their state legislator had an update on uh, in. Through HB two thousand nine, which passed in twenty twenty-three. We weren't aware of it until several months ago. Um, this um, added consideration, uh, it was a very simple, well, it was not on this bill. Uh, but one of the things that impacted was the SIP programs. And it was a very simple addition of uh, the line that says the county and if the proposed zone will be located within city. And the addition was or port. Um, the city or port have entered into an agreement describing the subsection. So it requires that if the county is using a SIP uh, agreement for economic or industrial development. That if it's within a city, they would have to be a party of it. Now it's if it's within a port. Um, some people say, well, that's uh, or property. Uh, but the plain reading of the law is within the port district. Uh, which for several counties uh, means that ports are involved in every SIP decision. What the impact is, is uh, those initial uh, community service charges and such that, that are negotiated. Instead of being a uh, case in point for tomorrow, a point five percent spent on distributions of that. They now become a controlling partner and negotiate a larger uh, portion of that. We've asked a few questions. There is some legislative language going around. Um, and to possibly change that. I have been, you know, as part of this man, I've been approached by several other people. But um, it is uh, something that was uh, presented and sponsored by uh, by Representative Greg Smith. Uh, in relation to having the boards involved with industrial development, uh, with the counties that they're. Uh, that's what he believes that are set up. And we're at a point where uh. Any little direction from the VOC, just to, you know, even now or in the future, if there's any, any action that they'd like to have us take or pursue on. On, uh, you know, considering any change of this or uh, or if you have any questions on, on what the status is of legislation such.
So my input is that I don't see why the port would be a party or Windridge East as an example. You know, it's a long ways away from any of their facilities, aren't we providing infrastructure? It's not on, they own the control. So I don't understand why they are a party to it. As an example, the data center off the bombing range road, they provide services to it, you know. I can see that, but especially renewable energy, that's a long ways away from them, that they provide no services for them. I don't see why they are at the table anymore.
The justification was that um, felt like ports were in a better position to help negotiate. And understand industrial development than many counties uh, are. And that was the justification we had that I received on, on the language that was added.
So maybe, and I don't know what's being proposed for language, but maybe. We, it's accepting renewable energy projects, because let's be honest, that's predominantly what's gonna happen outside of the ports area. And that they won't be providing any services to. You know, because where is their expertise in negotiating an agreement with a renewable energy company? They don't. The county has said it, expertise now because they have done it in the past.
Well, there might be, I think, what's one of those? What's one of those, uh, this new uh, data center that's going in and we just talked about.
Oh, right, for Trump.
They might be going with SIP, so what would be at the table? So.
Look, you know, and I think I know where you're going with this, but you know, they are providing services to them.
Yeah, I know. So.
And then the reason they're making money by providing those services, I get that.
So, okay, so that kind of fits into your exception, just of the holes.
Yeah.
So do we want to give Matt any direction on what he should be, what his thoughts would be on this? As far as, you should be proactive and doing something about it or. It's because our option is do something or just accept it.
I'm for to do something because, you know, I want to work with the board, it might be. And I don't want to give them something that they really didn't have any intention of. Just because they're there. Why do they get something if they aren't contributing to it?
So what do we want him to do? Do we want him to talk to?
Well, it sounds like you've already been working on potential legislation or language. Yes, that's my question, whether it's for legislation or what thing on. We've had some initial themes represented by Levy. Their, her LC uh, language just saying uh, within the city or port owned property. To limit what, what the ports purchase for development. Uh, that would allow preservation of, you know, development over by the Auburn Airport that, that they would still be involved in all those. However, most of those being taken care of through the CRES. Um, uh, Hillsborough has offered some uh, interesting language, which would say this is only pertinent. Tomorrow and New Matilla Counties. So it more or less exempt the rest of the state. And just let Marrow and New Matilla Counties uh, have to be partners with, uh, with the ports if they want to use SIPs. Um, so.
It didn't just get started because the.
Uh, originally we heard it was something in CUSP, but that is not the case.
Oh, wasn't the case. I mean, I know the CUSP.
And so um, cost them, yeah. So um. My challenge is, you know, several. Several ports are nothing more than Marina. And uh, so then, you know, for, for, if you look at it, just the organizationally and uh, that suddenly you have. Uh, you know, people with the fish and tackle and uh, tie-up shop, which has a district that maintain that. Uh, is now suddenly in the economic development world uh, for that part of the county. Um, ours is a very robust port. They do have some great experience to do. Um, I, I do have questions, you know, uh, you know, the, the AWS data center. Seem to have went pretty good with the SIP program and several of our energy projects. Uh, prefer the SIP over the pilot because it provides them additional incentives to do. Uh, and uh, so. Um, so the language of just, you know, uh, for own properties, a little more constrained than, than what you're proposing. But um, that was a very simple solution to a simple change to what they're considering.
So I just thought that may be easier for the board to swallow. They may be more athletic. Fight off on it and not fight it. Justin, yeah, Justin.
Yeah, I think the, um, this was surprising back then, I think, I've done a lot of SIPs in fact, worked on those in the past. And this was kind of surprising, this part came up to not double six. Because this wasn't brought to the county councils, it wasn't mentioned, like, what is going on here?
Chair will be removing that table, but for the next, you have it here.
That's what I think is interesting.
Yeah.
And we always, um, there was kind of a difference because I was, my thoughts and concerns were moving to SIP. Maybe one thing is that was like the only avenue we could carry. Right, that when the county was strong, army thinks we're saying we're just doing this, but we have enterprise. Like that is the key and that many times, most of those go through that. And why sit back and think about this is like, gosh, you know, let's pretend I was a left official on the port. That was my job to represent them. My position there would seem to be like, try to steer every SIP to a CRES. Because those we're used to, we do those and that will be my obligation, I think, if I were part of these negotiations and say. Hey, we have this even better model over here and we can expand the boundaries pretty simple here. Let's do this instead. And so that's where I, I just kind of got kind of concerned of like, gosh, this will be difficult for agreements to get done. People sometimes complain that we're slow on SIPs anyways, but I think adding another party makes it even more. And I, we definitely understand the expertise that other groups can provide. And I think that's where we'd reach out for help. Like, I think that would be one thing I know if we said, gosh, is this, they say to me, there's a funny, we don't have the pros. We probably reach out to our partners, like the board saying, hey, what do you think of this? Getting that expertise, but this is now more of a control. So I, I'm sorry.
I, so my, my, I guess where I'm confused is if we did a CRES outside of port property, it's strictly a county CRES. As it was.
Yep.
On the bombing ridge. But now you're moving further away to the SIP. They get involved. How does that, like you said, we're gonna change everything to a CRES at that point? Because they don't have the legislation to go after a CRES as they would a SIP. Is that correct? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question, pointing out facts. I, I need, I wanted to know, is there. They wouldn't, because of what legislation says about SIP, doesn't give them that same latitude with a CRES. CRES, as long as we had the property boundaries moved to where we could do that CRES.
Yeah, a CRES is just purely limited by statute for a certain amount of acres, I believe, and you can expand and change the boundaries, just like it was done. In Lexington recently, that was added on the CRES. This was actually discussed with the Wind Tower project. Like, one of the projects was like, gosh, and there was pushback on the county on it, I like trying negotiations. The question was like, maybe we just expand the CRES. To include these or try to include or a solar one or something to include this area.
And use up all the acres.
Yeah, that's the problem. I think that was.
Right, no.
But they're trying to figure out a solution um, to it.
There's no boundaries on SIP necessarily, not like there's.
Correct, that's correct. There's not that same.
I just want to understand, yeah, I just want to understand.
I was wondering, does this cover that red zone, that, you know, the other SIP or other uh, type of uh. Uh, for the smaller energy projects, they call it the red zone.
So this is specifically for the SIP, Strategic Improvement Plan, so.
But this could lead, my thought sometimes is leads into pushing to other types of options, right? If you think, well, I got to negotiate with the different parties, while I try to have this be as a, use a different taxing like. Yeah, the red zone, I call it the solar, that's an option. That's not a SIP, that's a separate thing somewhat. Um.
That's totally.
It's only separate, but there's so many different types of, right? So that's a solar one, a separate. But theoretically, a person could say, oh, we don't want to do the solar one, we want to do that through a SIP. I think they could do it that way, or I want to do three, four zone. Usually they'll choose the best economic feasible option.
I don't think we've had any solar that have gone SIP unless it was part of the wind, but like the working stair.
Correct.
But this, the pilot set up specifically.
And it's the best, most feasible one for them most of the time too.
But if, but also if you're talking about, if you went out with a CRES, uh, port's gonna be automatically involved anyway.
That's only, only if it's in the port.
No.
Well, are they involved? The CRES has done on boardman, on bonding, that's a SIP. Oh, that's a SIP.
Well, no, it, but they are gonna be, they are partner in the, in the new CRES down by Lexington. If you set a CRES anywhere in the county, the port is going to be a partner. They, if it's outside, everybody's influenced, so it's just gonna be the county port.
Yeah.
And it does, correct. And, and that's, we're also different with funding. You think about that aspect of the SIP, a lot of times it's generally, it's been a set amount. General fund dollar to, you know, taxes and loo, uh, payments and loo taxes, more of general fund amount. We had one SIP that had, you know, a special aspect for education or something, but normally it's just been, you know, up to twenty-five million is tax normal. And then the amount goes to general fund is the payments for the air, for the SIP agreements. If you add another party, then theoretically those could all change too, right? It could be that, right, well, the port could say, well, because of our work, we're a part of this. You deserve a certain amount coming to us every year.
Well, we got five million dollars upfront, it's infrastructure money from Amazon.
Correct.
Where would happen that have gone?
Correct. And that, and, and that would be where they could say, we want that amount. And listen to Karen, it's, well, no, that's too much. Okay, well, our preference would be we do enterprise zone, then it's guaranteed to be split generally as we know it.
Each SIP is negotiated, they're all different. They, they're, they're not like, uh, pilots just set seven thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, the CRES is different, and SIPs, the SIPs at all, even though, just like we just did with the Amazons. Different than what we did with the first, if you go back and read the original SIP agreements with the. You know, all the different energy companies. Yeah, longer. The STEM agreement in, with schools, they're still getting.
Yeah.
A million dollars a year.
Uh, it's separate between STEAM and.
Six hundred thousand for the, to the STEM and four hundred thousand of ours.
Correct, yep.
Correct, but that's it, that's two of the super grand, let's have that in, I think.
Just one, this is one. I mean, those, there's a lot more flexibility, but that's also where, you know, having another party in there too, they'll have to, you know, their own negotiations on it too and. It's just very different than we're used to in the past, and that's the thing where it's surprised for SIP. Um, in my mind, trying to think, well, how do you easily negotiate? We don't have like a admin, like the enterprise zone functions, it's useful working that, negotiating together on those. Because you have administrator, and I think Chair Sykes are filling that role, right, for the CRES.
Yeah.
There's certainly an administrator now for the SIPs, we'd almost have to have a party that then, Matt, then now combining everyone together. Now set them with the port, getting a port representative on there. Um, Enterprise Zones made it clear about how we vote on those, there's a set procedure when you create the Enterprise Zone, or you have. Like two parties of each, you have to have a, a positive vote to do that, there's not rules set up.
Well, that's, that was my question.
Yeah.
Cause I was wondering if we, if, when I first heard about this is, so what's the process? So I asked. Nobody knew because do, do, when you have this call meeting to negotiate with a new. Wind farm or Amazon who wants to build the SIP, do, do you have to have the. The port at the table, debate vote, is there any verbs, how's it work, you know? I don't know if that's clear, Justin.
Well, it's clear in the fact, it's not made clear, but it is, you're looking at it, that they have to approve, right? Just kind of like, it's. Is the same type of thing fairly that we think back to the enterprise zones, I would say six years ago. There's been, I think about that time, the hiccup, I can call it a hiccup, but the, the realization that. Normally, the enterprise zone's just approved, it's, here's our group, we approve it, but there's that next step where the county had to affirm it. A separate affirming, completely separate authority. I consider what the port now has is that separate affirming authority. Where, you know, where they then say, oh, do you want to approve this SIP? Oh, Port of Moro, do you agree with this? Yep, we approve it, you know, we affirm that decision and we're okay with it. And of course, the port will be like. I would imagine their position would be, we're not so sure about doing that unless we're a part of the process. We don't want to just stand or stamp something, we want to be a part of the process, that is fair, I can understand that. Uh, they're having to approve it, so that's how I see it now, is that.
You look, the community service fee is a big part of a SIP outside, you know, outside of the. You know, regular taxation, yeah, and then, then our, our uh infrastructure that we got separate. And treated as SIPs. No, community service fee was, we negotiated with those separate uh. Taxing limits, the effective districts.
Yes.
And, you know. To, because, and we use the uh, the percentage, it was uh five million dollars. And you put five million dollars in the community service fee.
Oh.
And then the, then you divide that up, however, however you. You divide that up, and it's, it's a good count, it is a part, part of that process, you know, and all that, because normally. When, when we divided the, when we divided the uh, the community service fee up on Amazon. Uh, the port. Uh, that was got money from them, but only a small portion because the taxing rate is so low. Because divided the money, we use, we ask Mike for the percentage of taxes that are paid. If it's just been a taxing, we said, let's just use that, that's fair. Well, the county gave up half their money. You know, at one point, they had given up. To go back to Rita, they didn't take any money, they gave up all the community service fee to this, to the effective districts. In our last one, we gave up half of what it would have done if we had taken. Uh, you know, the, the, the taxing percentage of a norm.
There was also a large difference in the amount.
Yeah, so is the port.
Over two hundred fifty thousand.
They would, they would.
So they could come in and say, well, we want, we want to, I mean, it's still, because they only got like fifty thousand on Amazon because their tax rate is so low.
And I would say that is correct because the whole package of a SIP agreement is what's approved. And so that includes, these those terms are a little bit different, there's the community service.
Because you, we negotiate that separate.
Well, if that was separate, if the, if this agreement only says, we're going to give moral county five million dollars, and that's all we care about.
That's, you, you negotiate that with Amazon, but then you go to the special districts, because we sat right there in a room at here again. And we negotiated how this uh, the community service fees are going to be, that's already.
And Amazon had nothing to do.
Amazon has nothing to do.
If it's the community service fee, the five million is separate than the community service.
Well, yes, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. Yes, yes, that's the community service fee. And then there's the five mil, five million just went to the county, where upfront, but Amazon came up with that.
I would say that the SIP business organ is not approve SIP agreements until that's also signed. The concern, the community service.
Correct, so if you don't approve the, if you, if you don't approve the community service fee. Business, if you can't come to an agreement, we had, how many, how many special districts we have, five, there's about twelve.
All that, all that distinct would come up with its.
Figure it out. But if you do, if you, if they are involved with a SIP, are they sitting in the room there? And they can say, okay, we want to, we want a big chunk, because we didn't have to go by the. Percentage that we did, you know.
Seventy five percent of the affected districts, correct, the determination. Yeah, that is always going to get out voted.
We're going to get out voted, but we, the one thing.
So it is confusing, but, no, I understand, you, you are correct about the idea that community service fee, it is not set because if it doesn't get agreed upon. Then it does get decided by the business organ, they hate that, that's why they keep bugging, like, are you sure you can't get this figured out? Because we don't want to be the ones. And their default, as I usually try to explain prior agreements, is that, well, the easiest option is just to base it on the tax rate. That's all they're going to do, why would they do anything separate?
Right.
And so I think that's why a lot of groups do come together, these long times the county said, we'll give up our part in the normal group service fees. And we know private business organ is not going to do that, because the easiest thing is to say, what's tax rate for all the special districts? Yeah, that's.
Correct, but with the port, it's the same thing. That's what I'm saying, if they're at the table, are they going to accept fifty thousand dollars? Because unless, unless Amazon would came, came to us with five million. We, you know, they were the ones that proposed, we would have, it wasn't, it wasn't mandatory or anything, it could have been just a community service fee. So, what, what good would the port have been as a partner in a SIP agreement with, without the, the uh. The, this, the, the extra, you know, capital improvement to the money they gets, where would they be at?
Well, they would be at the agreement, and I, the hard part is, it's not only note, they would have the authority, I believe, to ask for a set amount. That they wish, I mean, that, there would be nothing.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they could ask, it, it sounds for the community service, I would actually say, the community service part, they'd be a part of it, they could ask for it, but that wouldn't make much of a difference. The real power here in the current situation is that SIP amount, the additional amount of payment, they'd say the county gets this, oh, and Port of Moro gets.
Yeah.
Million dollars a year, and that's just part of the SIP agreement.
But they would. The, the, the way the SIP, the way the community service fee is divided up, it doesn't have to be that way, you could go.
That's just a community service, separate.
It doesn't have to be divided up by the percentages of a normal tax rate, it doesn't have to do, we don't have to do that. If we walked in or said, we're not going to give you anything, we're going to keep it all, and they said, yes, okay. Could do that.
Well, if all the taxes, seventy five percent of taxing districts agreed and said, yes, that sounds cool to us.
Right, and that's an extreme example, it won't happen, but I'm just telling, showing them, that's not written in stone.
Yeah.
So if the port's at the table, are they at the table in the community service fee room also?
They are, yes, they are, that is a separate thing, they are at the table still same as in either taxing in the community service.
You know.
Why do you? So do they get half of the county's money that they?
So they're, so they're in it like the county is, and then with special districts, they won't get their, their tax percentage because they're going to get it upfront.
Well, the county negotiates with the special districts.
And the court suddenly becomes, since they're negotiating upfront and partnering with you, they're, uh, they, they are out of the special districts.
Right, which do it, it's only fifty thousand, but if we get two and a half million, they would sit there and say, okay, we want one point two five. Because where are your partner? They, they would write off the fifty thousand, I mean, of course, that's all they got. In the last Amazon's uh, uh, special district, or, you know, service. That's all they got because of tax returns, but if they're a partner with us. They, you see what I'm saying? They could sit there and go, okay, we want half of the, half of the money, because the county gets the bulk of it if they want to take.
They get, they get, I guess so, I mean, I guess, I would agree, this, the, the community service fee is only the taxable rate to twenty five million. The SIP agreement actually covers everything that's in excess of the valuation of that.
That's different, new service fee is, is different than what you just talked about.
That's the, that was the statutory definition, like the community service, that fee was thing, the five million has never been done before, that sucker was.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about community service fee, where we sit in the room with the special districts and we divided up two and a half million dollars. And the way we decided to do it was through uh percentages.
That was, that was our proposal and then the special districts got settled. They said, you got enough money, this other pot here, you don't need any of this pot, we're taking it all, so they took our.
So.
Part, but it across all then.
There's twelve percent in special districts, not all of them showed up, the port didn't show up because they only get fifty thousand, but. If they got a big bulk like the county, they would have taken a full amount. Do they get to sit there and say, okay, we want half of that special, you know, the community service fee? The, the county would have too, see, I, that's what I, I just wonder if they were part, but, but let's see, the whole thing is unclear, if they're part, because.
Well, I would assume they are, Dave.
That's what I'm saying.
So what, what you're saying is that you're in support of Matt going out and trying to change it so that the port isn't a partner.
Well, you know, I'm just trying to figure out where they're, where they're going to get the money in the SIP. If they didn't have the five hundred, five million, where would they be, why would they want to be part of the SIP?
Because they will get part of the five million, uh, in that example, or they will negotiate that the county gets. Two and a half, or, you know, they may be generous and say, well, you know, it isn't in our, our immediate areas, so. We'll be kind and we'll give you three and we'll take two.
Exactly. Would be, that's what I kept trying to get out of the beginning, they are going to be at the negotiating table, because they would be able to say. We want something like five million, because the five million was new, that's the first time a SIP has ever done it.
But I, I don't know if that's accurate, I mean, it's, we got, there's other.
No, we have other SIP agreements, that's typically labeled as additional monies, but it's monies that are collected annually. Or sometimes it's just a one-time payment that are aside from, they're aside from the community service.
They're negotiated though, they're not, yes, they're, you know, they're not mandatory, like.
No, it's negotiated.
It's not mandatory, like tax with the first twenty five million or whatever, so it's negotiated, that's my point.
Right, but that's kind of, it's the same bucket, or that five million dollars was in, so, I was just saying that there's.
Sure.
Other SIP agreements where we're, we're receiving those.
Point then, because then if the port is your partner in negotiations. They're not gonna, you know, you don't get to call the shots anymore, they're going to say, okay, we'll. You know, we won't sign this agreement since we're your partner unless we get this amount. But they're going to be sitting at the table with you, negotiating with, you know, the Cardi reservoirs and, you know.
Five, throw five thousand dollars per megawatt of nameplate capacity, that's the amount that will be distributed between three million dollars going. For a megawatt, or three thousand dollars going to Morrow County, two thousand dollars, going to the Port of Morrow, that's how it would be written in the SIP area. That's a, you want to win power project, and they'd probably be part of that. Negotiations.
So, part of this is, uh, I was all excited to research and check it out, I thought it was a Kusby thing. It seems like it is only closer to home roots, and so because of the political aspect of that, I, I didn't want to pursue it any further. And without in, involving discussion by the VSC.
Well, I think, and I think from this one, for part of this discussion here, my thought is that, you know, this is maybe the county we've been working at, that we. Realize its staff has a concern, or like, oh, this is a unique thing, that's going to have an impact on the county, we're looking at it, I think it's fair to say it's county staff. I'll even say it's county council, we're getting, I think, gosh, this is a concern, it's going to have more parties. I would, I prefer the old way, I, I think that's how we function, I did not receive any information from the board. Anything else saying in the past, oh, we are in favor of this change, so I think the direction I'm looking at now is to continue as it was before. I think by bringing it up to the board here, just even through the part of report is, if the board is concerned about looking at changes or saying, no, you like the way it is. Then I think that would be the action, saying, stop what your normal course is, which is seeing this issue, trying to revert back to what it was. Um, that's where maybe the board would take action, I think if the board's comfortable with us still working towards possible solutions, like, we're not saying. Hey, here's a letterhead, our board commissioner signed off on this, they're a hundred percent behind this legislative concept, that's not now. That might come later, but that's not now. Want to stop doing that, and if you've given that.
Again, where this is a update, uh, we'll be collecting more information, but. Yeah, it is, as we presented it to the VOC entirely, uh, if you have questions or, you know. Any additional, but happy to talk about that offline and to, and get you fully updated on the things. Prepare for update December as necessary.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all for my part, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, correspondence, yeah, letters that didn't get in.
Well, I, uh, Matt and I met with a group. Last, was it two weeks ago?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, really don't have a lot of information other than they are interested in doing the presentation. For the, uh, one with board at some point, company's name's Rainmaker, they, uh, they do cloud seeding. Scary topic, what you learn about, scarier gets, so, uh, but interesting nonetheless. Um. So, uh, they're going to be coming out at some point to do a drone presentation of license, their part will not be this week. Um, so it's kind of a, I know some of you guys are interested in seeing that, then they will kind of come and give a presentation and we can. Let's do their presentation and make it a, a decision or not, I don't think it's a decision, personally, I don't think it's a decision for the county to make. Uh, it's a private company, I think what they're looking for is, uh, con- convenience from. The county to bring in like wheat farmers and farmers and, oh, maybe, uh. The soil conservation district, um, to have, have some thoughts on what they may or may not want to do, so. So. I, I don't get too much into what they, what they said, because I'm not an expert by any means, but. They say they can bring precipitation to a fairly localized area, it's the cloud, with the clouds that we have in our areas, that they can. Literally send drones up into it, spray a little of the silver iodide into it, which is, I got an NSDS sheet for them on the silver iodide, it's fairly benign. Um, and the amount that they use is fairly small, um, and it basically. Attracts the water to it, some nice crystal wood, and it gets heavy enough that it drops out, and you can kind of control where the water drops. In theory. Interesting stuff, but anyway, I, so I told him I would, uh, I would bring it to you for information and, and see if. If, when they come out, if you're interested in watching them fly the drones for a while, then if they want to, if you want to see a presentation, maybe. Um, I don't see where the county would really be all that interested in funding any of it, be more. About them going to specific farm, uh, wheat ranch or whatever it might be that would prefer to have water on their property. I mean, the county really has any, uh, interest in. In doing a lot of the funding for it's. In doing a lot of the funding for it. Interesting nonetheless. And then uh I missed the water advisory committee, but I did get a bunch of calls afterwards. And. The big question that I'm getting hit with on water is that we are we are hyper focused on water quality. And we are not paying enough attention to water quantity, which. When you're talking about the Lava, which is what I'm on, is strictly about water quality. It has nothing to do with quantity. But the Water Advisory Committee, its planning department brought forward is more of a basis of water period. At least that was the understanding from some of the people on the committee and that's why they got on the committee. If they wanted to bring the quantity issue to the forefront and they felt like they were not represented well. Um in the Water Advisory Committee. So, once again, I'm not on that committee. I did go to some of the meetings because I'm the water guy, if you will. But uh anyway, just want to bring that forward. Those issues will. Be still on the table. I think the Water Advisory Committee, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, is done in December.
Yeah, they're preparing to to kind of give their final present- presentation to the B O C during December. Uh it did have a term of state on on the advisory committee and so um. Uh so if we wanted to repurpose it or restructure something for utilization in the future, we'd we need to consider that.
So and I will say that I know that a lot of the committee members. Misunderstood the purpose of the advisory committee. They felt it was more of a committee to set. Policy. I was I was saying, there's a lot of people on that committee that want to set policy for water.
Give us an example of policy.
I'm sorry.
Could you give us an example of what policy?
Um well. Control over, I don't want to go.
No, I'm I'm just trying to think, how many the state has in waters of such tight fist. And they all never drop.
So and I just think they were they were coming in thinking that they were gonna be able to tell the county how to deal with water issues.
We don't do.
I know. I'm just telling you, I'm holding on the committee. It's just what I clean. Yeah, I there wasn't anything necessarily specific. There were lots of things thrown and thrown at the table. Fortunately, there were enough different. It was a very diverse group. It was a really good group of individuals. I'll still go there. Uh very diverse and which helped in that aspect because they all wanted to make a policy, whether it was. You know.
If the county's big water, we should water we handle is the bottles we could take out to West West.
So met with Matt and Lindsay last week and we um selected a. Consultant to help with the grading and evaluation form to do the evaluation process with man. And the one of the guy out of the debt buyer, I understand. He's been before for something else and the proposal that he presented looks. Very good and the process was, you know, something that's completely lost. So moving forward with that, I'm just. To report tomorrow, the Linda Graham for Indiana meeting of Dorothy Syria Commission on Transportation. That Dave and I have a broadband meeting uh five tomorrow, Dave. And then um of course, Dave's trying to set up the uh enterprise on. He need to expand the boundaries, so he took some. Inter. So now I think that's it.
I'll expand on the democrats, the creas. They got an application from a company to put. Looks to me like it's a second generator out of the three mile farms. Have they have one out there already? And this one will be. It's about a forty-seven million dollar, Dustin. And they had a spot picked out. It'll take an expansion of, they want to go with the creas. And then take an expensive crease, so. So trying to put together a meeting of the creas. I don't know if Thursday is gonna work. To ask that it's gonna be a standard five year. Exemption, so it's not an automatic. So we gotta talk to Chris. She they want to do the expansion before they move forward with the application. Uh so. Oh, we've been working on the market consortium, the US approved the. The concept of the I G A sent that over to Lisa Port. She sent it off to her. Their attorneys. He's got some suggestions. She promised she was gonna be getting that back to me. Uh soon, but I haven't got it back yet. But as soon as you get that back, if it is just minor, well, whatever it is. And hopefully we can get one approved first. Go back for your look at your approval first meeting in December. I'm gonna take it back to the port. Uh have them prove it and then go forward with the. Of organization meeting and um they're working on uh. What better organizations can apply, different kind of tasks and things we want to. Explore now. So that's. Um the C D A will report on that because I went to two and then I'm not gonna hand it back. Were in the, well, actually, there's. It was, yeah, anyway. The. Staff with. And they're doing an evaluation of Greg.
The staff with.
Well, Debbie's on it until January and I believe Emily was putting.
The they're doing a, they're gonna do an evaluation. On Greg. And so formulated now. Thomas violation. So we're gonna do that. And John Schaefer, we have the lawsuit, you know. We tried to argue around, we're trying to, we're trying to get a way to move forward, you know, and. Kept saying, well, you know, I've got this uh, I've got this idea that all of you are gonna buy in to get us past this. I said. Are you gonna drop the, are you gonna drop the lawsuit? He goes, well, if you accept this, then we will. Plus, is it a whole vote favor of what you do? He said, yeah, it'll be part of the. The agreement to move past the lawsuit that they have against the C D A, the tribes. Even to the county have against the C D A, so. So I think it's, I think it's kind of looking a little better than I want. Anyway, you gotta connect. That's about all I got. Okay, uh we have had executive session, right?
One executive session discussing two issues with justifications is listed.
That's about. That's yours. And that one's about the. So it'll be those two with uh, you know, first. So my understanding is we. Yeah, H and E, correct. H and E on the two basins. No, uh not that, no.
Okay, so now I'll just, so we're going to move into executive session. Under O R S one nine two to six six zero two H, which allows the commission to be in the session. To consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely due. And also under O R S one nine two to six six zero two E, which allows the commission to need executive session. To conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property grants act. Representatives of the news media and visiting their staff will be allowed to have executive session. All of the members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report or disclose. Any of the deliberations or anything said about these topics during the executive session, except to state the general subject. Of the session as previous statements. No decision may be made in executive session. The other thing, the virtual session, we will return to open session, allow for the audience back into the room. And the room be a possible potential decision or action made as a result of the executive session. So that. We're out of executive session now. There will be no um. Any decision or action taken at this time, so. There's really no business to come before the mission.